Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, thank you. Well, that was okay for 8:30. We are here this morning to convene in council chambers in open session. This is a joint meeting with the P and the Planning and Zoning Commission. And thank you to the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission for being here this morning. We are calling this meeting to order. I will turn it over to Mr. Zach Sawyer for him to call P and Z into order.
All right. Thank you. And on behalf of P and Z, we will call our meeting to order.
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. First of all, we will begin this morning with some brief remarks from our planning and zoning staff, and then we will have a presentation by Kending Keese Collaborative or KKC on the proposed Unified Development Code and Revised Zoning Map. As this is a public hearing, we will open this up for a public hearing, and we'll have further instructions at that time. But first of all, we'll turn it over to you, Robbie, for Agenda Item 1.1.
Well, good morning, Mayor and council members, P and Z commissioners. I know this is kind of a different time to see you guys, but I appreciate you all making time to come out today. What we would like to do is just briefly give a very brief introduction and background to kind of where we're at today, and we're going to pretty quickly turn it over to our consultant, who's going to have a presentation for you as well, that go a little bit deeper into the UDC. I think that, can I get the presentation up on the screen? Here we go. All right. The UDC has its roots with the adoption of Plan Lubbock 2040, our comprehensive plan, which was adopted in December of 2018. Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee was formed. It consisted of over 30 members of stakeholders, community leaders, citizens that gave input into how we wanted Lubbock to grow and develop into the future. One of the final assignments of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee was to identify their priority recommendations in this plan. And these were actually written into the comprehensive plan itself. And among those were to revise the zoning and subdivision ordinances into a Unified Development Code to match planning and engineering goals outlined in this plan, to consider combining the zoning and subdivision regulations into a Unified Development Code to streamline the regulations and make them more user-friendly to the public and to developers. And finally, a stated goal in the comprehensive plan was to revise the zoning and subdivision ordinances to implement the comprehensive plan recommendations and consider a Unified Development Code to combine all these regulations into one standardized document. Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 211 relates to municipal zoning authority statutes in the state of Texas, and Section 211.004 specifically addresses compliance with the comprehensive plan, and it states that zoning regulations must be adopted in accordance with the comprehensive plan, and they must be designed too, and it specifically mentions these things: lessen congestion in the streets, secure safety from fire panic and other dangers, promote health and general welfare, provide adequate light and air, prevent the overcrowding of land, avoid undue concentration of population, and to facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewers, schools, parks, and other public requirements. On May 28th of 2019, Kending Keese Collaborative was awarded the contract for United Development Code Development Draft with the following objectives identified in the scope of services: to provide professional ordinance writing and community planning services and assist the city in creating a Unified Development Code. That work effort will be centered on procedural streamlining in order to ensure that applicants can move their projects, proposals through the system rapidly while also ensuring that the city maintains a thorough review process and the quality of the build environment is high. And finally, the project will address zoning districts and land uses, locations within the city where form-based codes may be the best regulatory tool instead of traditional use-based approach, site development standards, subdivision regulations, administrative procedures, and will work to implement the policies identified in the city's recently adopted comprehensive plan. Having said all that, I'm going to turn it over to our consultant, and they're going to hopefully answer a lot of questions that you might have about the UDC specifically. I want to introduce Mr. Brian Mayberry with Kending Keese Collaborative. And, you know, Brian's been great to work with. He's really helped us on this project, and we really look forward to hopefully him answering a lot of the questions you guys might have.
Welcome, Mr. Mayberry. We are now moving to Agenda Item 1.2, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members and P and Z members for being here, and thanks, Robbie, for teeing me up. It's been a pleasure for this project, working with staff. You have a great staff and a great set of interesting and interested stakeholders who want to bring this project, I think, to fruition and completion and adoption, and so that's what we're tracking towards. So I'm just going to give a little bit more of a detailed introduction to this project with some numbers, sort of, and how we got here, give you some highlights of the UDC, and highlights being the key word. We would be here way longer than probably anyone would want to be if I got into a ton of detail on everything, but I do know that there will be questions, and we'll do our best to address those. And then, when I'm done, you know, I'll answer any other questions anyone might have, and at that point, I would believe the public hearing would begin. So, overall, this project started back in July of 2019, and has gone through several stages that were laid out as part of the kind of overall project schedule and scope of services that were part of our contract. Bottom line is that we've gone through and done a critique of the existing regulations toward the beginning, had several sort of initial stakeholder sessions with people who are interested in how Lubbock grows in the future, drafted the UDC in what are called modules or pieces that were on specific topics, and had them reviewed by the staff and by stakeholders, and took in their comments and modified and refined those modules into more finalized documents, and put them all together into a public hearing draft, basically, that you're looking at today and that the public has been available for the public to look at. We also had some open-door meetings for people to come and see, just general public, lay people, to see how the project is going, ask any questions they might have, give their comments. We've provided a few for each module, basically, updates to you all and to the P and Z regarding the kind of progress of the project. Then we had a long period, May 2021 to very recently, of really intensive review. There was a Unified Development Code Subcommittee. There were, again, stakeholders reviewing the draft, providing a lot of comments and feedback that we reacted to and modified the draft, and now here we are at the public hearing stage, tracking again toward adoption. There are several very big-picture goals to this project, implementing the policies of the comprehensive plan, doing a critique, as I mentioned, and actually doing the code, actually the drafting work of doing the code, and those are all tracking through. Just a reminder, especially for people who maybe don't come to hearings like this every day or every week, the difference between a comprehensive plan and a Unified Development Code, you know, you spent a lot of time several years ago putting together your comprehensive plan, and now we're doing this project, and some people might wonder, well, what's the difference? And difference is, think of the comprehensive plan as sort of like a menu at a restaurant, and the Unified Development Code is the cookbook for how those things are made. The comprehensive plan sets out policies, it's very graphically oriented and things like that, and the Unified Development Code, while it uses graphics and uses tables and tries to be easy to understand, it is a legally adopted document that, if it were thought of like a cookbook, sort of has the ingredients for the meal, which is the standards, and then like the cooking time and that kind of thing, which is sort of the procedural parts of the Unified Development Code. So just kind of think of that, maybe, if there's ever any confusion about what the difference is. Some things that the UDC tries to accomplish are on the screen. It's consolidating your, most of your development-related documents, especially zoning, subdivision, and floodplain provisions into one sort of interlocked document so that it stands as a single source of standards and procedures and definitions. Doesn't include everything. Your building code still stands as it is, and there's other important development-related provisions that are there but that, you know, aren't not, are not folded in to this, and that's sort of pretty typical practice. When you combine the documents like that, inconsistencies begin to pop out, you know, especially definitions is a good example, where the subdivision standards might have defined a street, the word "street" one way, the zoning ordinance might have defined "street" another way, and there might have even been, in the floodplain, a definition for "streets." And so when you mash them all together like that, there's inconsistencies show up, and we've tried to weed those out as we've gone through the process. A Unified Development Code is easier for staff, I think, to administer than looking at three different documents and having to tease out what one says versus what the other one says and how to reconcile those. And, you know, staff has done a good job through the years trying to do that, but having it all in one place, we believe, is a more helpful way to do things. User-friendliness is always important for cities when they're wanting to revamp their codes. Many zoning-related documents are still from, you know, 20, 30, 40 years ago, and things were different back then, both in content and just style. We try to, while maintaining a legally defensible document, try to use as understandable wording as we can while keeping it, again, legally defensible. A lot of use of graphics and tables and online features that are helpful for most people as well. Streamlining is the final thing of what a UDC helps to accomplish, making sure that, or where we can, having as much authority granted to the staff to make action and take, make decisions on, that you all are comfortable with delegating to them. There are always things that are going to require a public hearing that the staff can't handle, which is like the big things, like the rezonings and specific use permits and things like that. But where it's available and where there's some flexibility, we like to make sure that staff has some authority to make decisions quickly, which saves the applicant time and money and saves them from doing what sometimes probably feels like a lot of paperwork, getting ready for hearings, and things of that nature. So that's what a UDC is. Some things that a Unified Development Code is not, so that we're all kind of on the same page, it's not, doesn't set a property tax rate or assess property value for any property in the city. It's not about annexation either. There is a provision in there about what newly, what zoning district, newly annexed territory would fall under, but it's not setting out what areas are to be annexed. It's not a capital improvements program or capital improvements plan either. It doesn't set a budget or a schedule for extending or improving infrastructure. There are provisions related to utility easements and streets and other things like that, but it doesn't talk about proactively the city funding new infrastructure or improving infrastructure. I mentioned before, it's not the building code either, which addresses structural safety related to the building structure, electricity, plumbing, and other matters like that. It's not construction standards either. It's not, that's something that often a public works or city engineer handles and addresses. There are many references to your public improvement specifications and standards, but it's not, doesn't give the rules on how curbs are placed and manholes are spaced out and stuff like that. And then finally, it's not property maintenance or a nuisance code. It doesn't mandate or require property owners to keep their buildings in good shape or safe. There may be other laws in your city code related to that, but the Unified Development Code does not directly address that. So it's about, you know, again, zoning, subdivision, and floodplain. Zoning being, saying what land uses can take place on private property, what kind of parking signs, building design to an extent, landscaping, and things like that that they have to have, and how streets are sort of interconnected or not, rules for cul-de-sacs, things like that, not any of these other things that are currently on the screen. So tracking toward where we are today, again, there've been a lot of public input. We had, we started with four kickoff meetings early on in the project, basically as soon as it started, with city staff and certain elected and appointed officials. We also had eight kickoff meetings with stakeholders, and stakeholders, again, are those who have some kind of either public, professional, or personal interest in how the city develops in the future. And so those are, those groups of people are there listed out in green on the, on the screen. There was a four-day intensive design workshop for downtown and its surroundings. There's a couple of sections and articles in the UDC draft that are mixed-use related. Those apply mostly to downtown, well, really, to downtown and its surroundings. There are some very kind of design-oriented, very specific standards related to how these areas would go in the future, and that's what that activity was focused on. We had, for basically three years, I think, weekly calls, almost every single week, with planning staff to talk about where we are, talk about important topics, coordinate, all of that kind of stuff. So stayed very in touch with planning staff for all this time, really. Those open-door meetings that I mentioned earlier on, where we had posters and took in input from the general public, where they were welcome to come and attend. The UDC, as I mentioned, was done in four modules with review by several different groups of people on various topics. There were 15, as I counted, UDC Subcommittee meetings that were held sort of in the final two, final third maybe of the project or so, where there were city staff members and council members who discussed some targeted issues, and we got their information and worked those into the draft. We had, as part of our commenting tools on the online draft, and this is a rough count, but about 1,300 comments from various people who have reviewed it, and just as many, pretty much, responses to those comments. So 2,600 or so of back and forth on things to, either requested changes or questions or comments on the contents of the draft. So very, in my opinion, thoroughly vetted with people who have reviewed it and just however many hours from city staff and consultant and community input to get here. Here is a very high-level organization of the code as it stand, or the draft code as it stands now, and I'm going to have a, basically, as close as I could get by to one slide on each of those articles. So you imagine, a lot of information just has to be kind of skipped over in order to concentrate on the very high points. So in the general provisions, we lay out the purpose of the UDC, implementing the comprehensive plan, promoting health and safety and quality of life and economic development. There are also some vesting and transition standards, what, how we treat applications that are currently in review, and by applications, I mean site plans, subdivision plots, rezonings, whatever the UDC addresses. If those are currently under review, they're basically under the old regulations, or if they have an approved application that has not expired, then it's also under the old rules, but then expired applications sort of have to start over at this point and be under the new rules. And we lean heavily on local government code to kind of back us up and inform us on how we're treating those. Here are the rundown of all the different zoning districts. There are five residential districts, six mixed-use, and seven, basically, public and non-residential uses. And they sort of run the gamut on the residential side from not, from very low density to high density. Mixed-use is sort of in targeted geographic areas that are downtown and its surroundings. And then the public and neighborhood districts go from least intense for the neighborhood commercial all the way up to the most intense of the general industrial. And you'll see throughout this presentation, I'll try to call them out when I can, but mainly you'll notice references to Plan Lubbock 2040 there in those blue boxes that give some backing up for why, you know, this is being addressed in the Unified Development Code. And in this case, there was a recommendation, which makes sense, to match new zoning districts to those future land use plan map categories that were in the comprehensive plan. There are overlay districts as well, related to historic preservation, infill development. And then we carried over your planned unit development regulations pretty much as-is and your South Overton overlay as-is, and, you know, overlay districts, and I'll call out the two infill ones. Infill development is important for many cities. It's sort of an efficient way to make use of vacant property that's sort of just sitting there and not being used, not contributing to the tax rolls. These two infill, overlay districts incentivize infill by giving breaks on landscaping and buffering and on parking and allowing some land uses that might not have ordinarily been allowed on that property, but as an encouragement to infill, those two are in place there and can be applied in different areas of the city. On the residential side, with the residential districts, we've got three subdivision types, and there was a recommendation in Plan Lubbock 2040 about integrating low-impact development, energy conservation, open space preservation as a key, and other environmentally sustainable principles. And so in that cluster and village type of a residential subdivision, there are incentives to set aside open space that can be either in its sort of natural state or can be a little more park-like. But the point is, is that if a developer would take the time and effort and, you know, sometimes the expense of setting aside additional open space than what they normally would have been required to do, then they would get more units out of that, more houses, basically, more lots out of that subdivision than if they had just done, you know, the bare minimum of open space under the conventional type there. So there are these three options. None of them are mandated in any certain part of the city. You can, a developer or builder can keep doing the conventional development type as they did before and get the same density, same lot counts, but if they want to do the cluster or the village, it's an option now, and it's not requiring a PUD. You know, a PUD can be uncertain for the applicant. It can take longer than what maybe the applicant would want to spend. These are more administratively approvable ways of doing things that, again, have the benefits of the open space for the general public and the benefit of the additional houses for the developer. There is a use table that sets up the land uses and where they're allowed and in what zoning districts. And you previously had just sort of lists and kind of the old-fashioned way of listing out land uses in each of the zoning districts. We kind of still retain that a little bit, where each district has its own list of permitted uses, but then we also have this consolidated sort of master table that also shows in a bigger-picture perspective where these different land uses are allowed. We have guidance in there for unlisted uses. You know, we don't know five years from now what's going to be the next, you know, axe-throwing lounge or the next, you know, pet daycare-type place, so there's guidance in there for these new land uses that crop up and come along. There are also limited uses. Those are land uses that they don't require a specific use permit, they don't require a public hearing, but there are some very specific use standards tied to them if they are to be done in certain districts, like for an example, in that highest density, the HDR, High Density Residential, there's allowances for things like an office to take place, even though that's primarily a residential district. If it's small scale, like there's a cap on the square footage of the building and a few other things related to scale that would allow that office to go there as long as it's kept, you know, at a more of a residential scale. And then there's the specific use standards that relate to what you've kind of already have, or there's requirements for the public hearing before that use can be established. We have standards for accessory uses, and some of those key ones are carports, pools, batting cages, accessory dwelling units, home occupations, bed and breakfasts, or short-term rentals, and then several different non-residential ones that are listed there as well. These are, of course, like they sound like, not the primary use taking place on the property, but sort of a side lesser-intense structure or land use taking place on the property where there's a primary use already there. Getting into a new article on building and site design, this is where all the parking and landscaping and sign and outdoor lighting provisions are. And I don't expect anybody to be able to read that table, but it's just the point, it shows that certain levels of act, development activity kick in different requirements. So that top row there is basically brand-new development. Well, if that happens, everything applies across the board. If there's just a small addition to, or a change in land use, for example, then only in this case, the parking provisions end up applying and not everything else, because that's a smaller change. So smaller change means fewer things apply. Bigger change means more of the, or all of the different provisions apply. This is very geared to the mixed-use standards, this slide and the next one, but just to say that there are very kind of specific design-related requirements. This is the form-based provisions that was mentioned by Robbie earlier. These apply in the downtown area and its surroundings, and they just set different building types. And that's sort of a technical term, but kind of design standards for houses for multiplexes, which are quads and triplexes, for townhouses and other types of buildings, and sets them as far as their scale and their position on the lot, which is usually kind of closer to the street for a more walkable environment that you would want to have in the downtown and mixed-use areas. Along with those types and the mixed-use are frontage standards, which is another technical term, sort of, where there are different kinds of basically facades on the building and how they relate to the sidewalk that are set out and specked out, whether it's a stoop, a porch, a terrace, just an open yard area, different kinds of options there that can be kind of plugged on to the different building types from the previous slide. And then there are just some non-residential building standards that are, apply citywide. These previous ones were in the downtown mixed-use area, but there are some standards for neighborhood and commercial, neighborhood, commercial, and office districts, which are those smaller-scale districts that might be much closer to residential areas to have their scale kind of controlled a little bit. And there are also big-box retail provisions, and the threshold for that is 50,000 square feet or more than there are just some building enhancements. We don't touch building materials because that's forbidden, forbidden under state law, but there are some design requirements related to that. Next is parking. Parking has changed a lot since probably the last time this ordinance was looked at for kind of an overhaul. The trend overall is to not require as much parking as we've previously have overall. So in a given office or given retail space, what you would have required in the '70s or '80s is going to be one larger amount. What is in the draft now is going to basically end up being fewer just because of the way lifestyles have changed. There's more recognition that big paved areas can cause drainage issues sometimes or heat island problems in the summer. So these things are looked at, and we've kind of used our national best-practice experience to ratchet down some of those parking standards. We also have stacking rules where, in a typical scenario here, like you see on the screen, a fast-food place or something like that, just making sure that cars aren't stacking out into the street and causing traffic problems. So those are, those are in there as well. And of course, the Plan Lubbock 2040 had a recommendation to review and revise existing parking regulations. Trees landscaping and buffering. This was a pretty significant change. You had sort of typical landscaping, site landscaping requirements. We have drafted in here what believe to be more flexible for an applicant but still producing good outcomes on the site. It's points-based, where that called-out sort of text box on the upper right shows that for a non-residential development, I'll go with one of the examples, with less than 10,000 square feet of floor area for the building, so a small, non-residential development needs 40 points. So how do you get the points? Well, that table beneath it has different things that that site can work in as far as landscaping to build up points. Some are worth 10 points, some are worth 5 points, and, you know, when you get, when that site gets to 40 as far as the different landscaping things they're providing, then they're good. Those categories are related to trees out front, foundation plantings, which are at the base of the building, sort of, parking lot islands, site landscaping, and then there's some other things that we've worked in that kind of didn't fit any of those that a site can have in it. Buffering is another big part of this article, or division, I should say. There are three types of buffer yards that are in the draft. District buffer yards between certain zoning districts that could conflict with each other, like, for example, between, the most drastic example being between an industrial district on one side of the property line and residential on the other. That's a big difference in what could take place on those two properties. So there are buffer yards that I'll have another slide in, on the next one that'll have some detail on. Parking buffers that would be mainly to prevent headlights from shining onto streets and causing glare or unsafe conditions, or shining onto other properties. And then street buffer yards that are on along different classifications of streets, whether arterial or collector or local. There are four buffer There are four buffer yards, as shown on the screen, A through D. A being sort of the narrowest and with the least amount of plantings within it, and D being the widest and with the most amount of plantings. We heard from community stakeholders early on that there was concern about the industrial uses next to residential uses and some of the issues that that has caused on those residential property owners. And so this D buffer yard is quite wide. It's 30 feet wide and has a lot of trees per kind of 100-foot segment along that property line where industrial touches residential. And that's where that, that big buffer yard would come into play as a, as trying to protect the enjoyment of those property owners from the impacts of the adjacent industrial. And, you know, it can't be retroactively applied. It has to be when that industrial use is either significantly modified or a brand-new use begins to take place there. Can't be retroactive. This is just a visual for what the buffer yards are. You know, the number of ornamental trees per 100 feet, the number of canopy trees and shrubs, and there's some kind of sort of mix-and-match options where if you have a fence or a wall within the buffer, then there's fewer plantings required because that wall is helping to provide that buffering and screening from the residential or whatever is next door versus if you don't have the fence or the wall, then that buffer is, has more plantings within it. Signs is the next division of this article. There was five or six or probably more than that years ago, a Supreme Court decision that said that cities can't regulate the content of signs. It can only be based on sort of the structure of the sign, the placement of the sign. So you can't have things any longer like real estate sign or apartment sign because that implies how the sign is used or what its purpose is for. So instead, now you will see more like just canopy sign or monument sign or freestanding sign, things like that. So those have been, that issue has been addressed in the draft. There are also standards for electronic message display and some other stuff about, you know, showing which districts, different sign types are allowed. The next big article is subdivision standards. There, we go into detail about when subdivision plating, plating is required and when it is not, and that's really based on, heavily on state law. This is where standards that are pretty technical but important for lots and easements and for street networks, how streets sort of inter, connect with each other, block lengths are addressed here. And then, and set, that one of the, that kind of third main bullet there talks about some of the different block lengths depending on the context. If it's a residential estate, then of course there's going to be longer blocks because the lots are bigger and wider. In a mixed-use district where you would want more walkability, it's more walkable when there are shorter blocks. And so those blocks are 750 feet. And then kind of the default is 1,200 feet for most residential developments. And there have been a lot of just sort of small changes in consultation with public works and city engineers and stakeholders on, on some changes to the subdivision standards. So we're shifting gears now to more of the procedural stuff. So this is with the cookbook analogy, this is how long you cook and at what temperature. There are two groups sort of either established or referenced in the UDC draft. The elected and appointed groups, which are that first bullet there, legislative and quasi-judicial bodies, and then administrative bodies are established and authorized. The Development Review Committee, Director of Planning, Building Official, City Engineer, Flood-Plane Administrator, and Director of Code Enforcement. Those all, folks all have duties to either recommend to you all recommendations related to applications or to make final decisions on submitted applications. In the Development Review Procedures, that's where we get into details about how variances are handled and acted on, how rezonings are acted on. We've consolidated a lot of things and put like all the public hearing-related matters in one spot, all the public notice in one spot of the code, addressing things like post-approval, what kind of things need to be done as far as recording of a plat or if there needs to be a minor adjustment, a minor change to something that was approved, then there's flexibility built in to be able to do that at the staff level under certain circumstances so that it doesn't have to go all the way through, again, just for some small change that is insignificant on the ground when you're, you know, in the, the place that was built. There are provisions related to inactive and expired applications. When they, when an application would expire if nothing is ever done with it, like if someone pulls a sign permit and they never build the sign, well, eventually that kind of needs to be flushed out of the system, and so there's expirations for that. Obviously, if they built the sign, then it doesn't expire, but just being aware of that. Probably the key thing in this entire article is the summary table. It shows all the different review procedures and the timing related to them, like, you know, a final plat comes after a preliminary plat or a, a site plan comes, you know, after a specific use permit is approved or things of that nature. So the timing, the expiration is addressed in one of the columns as well. Who makes a recommendation on it, whether it's staff or, or eventually like for a rezoning, the Planning and Zoning Commission, who makes the final decision? Who the appeal body is? You know, if there is a, an appeal of a, I'll just go with the sign permit example again, that's an administrative decision to approve or deny the sign permit. There's the ability to appeal that decision, and that goes, you know, to the Board of Adjustment or zoning, yeah, zoning Board of Adjustment. Sometimes an appeal, if it's a big-picture thing like a rezoning, the appeal is just to court. That's the next step in things. So that's addressed, and then there are a column of standards where for a sign permit, that standards column is going to point to the sign standards I talked about a moment ago. Non-conformities are addressed. That's things that were land uses or structures or lots that were created or established under the old rules that might not conform to the current rules. They can still keep going. They can still exist as they have been, but they're under certain constraints if they were to expand or get taller or expand their parking or things like that. So those are, are handled. Abandoned land uses are handled so that they, like if a use is non-conforming and can keep going, if it goes out of business and sits empty for 12 months or more than that, non-conforming use could not come back. You know, someone with that same business could not come back on that property unless they successfully changed the zoning of that property, then they could do that. So that's, this doesn't prevent interior maintenance or renovation, you know, that you can't see from the outside. We want people to still be able to maintain their, their properties even if it's a non-conforming use. There's a short article on enforcement and remedies just stating that the Code Enforcement Director is sort of the enforcement head of the, of the document that they have with notice the right to entry during normal business hours if there is a suspected violation or violation, stating that it's the owner's responsibility to maintain, maintain the property in compliance, not the tenant necessarily, the bottom line and it falls on the owner. Getting close to the end, word usage is the final article. There's rules of construction, which, not about building construction, but how the, the words in the document are construed. So like what we mean if we say shall versus what we mean when we say may. When there's a list of things, if there's an "and" in there, then that means everything. If there's a list of things and there's an "or," then it means one or more of those things. A lot of other things, how we handle rounding of numbers. If there's a fraction, like 12.3 parking spaces are required, then that's a round-up to the, to the next number, which would be 13. There's rules about conflicts. If there's a conflict between a table and the text of the ordinance of the code, then the text controls. So if the use table said one thing, but the wording of the standards said something else, then that wording controls over what's in the table. You know, don't want there to be conflicts, but in case there are. Also, there's addressing, addresses conflicts between like this document and external documents like some other piece of city legislation or things like that. They all get addressed in the rules of construction, and then the definitions are what they sound like, just functioning as a glossary for the document. So that concludes my run-through of the UDC, and I'd be happy to take questions or comments or basically turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor, to do as you wish as far as hearing or taking public comments or whatever, however you'd like to handle it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayberry. My understanding is you will be here through the public hearing.
Yes.
With council's approval, I would recommend or ask that we go ahead and move into the public hearing so we can take those comments, he can hear those comments. Citizens can leave if they need to after their comments, and then we can come back in for any further questions that PNC may have or the council. Is that approved by you, Mr. Sawyer?
Sound good.
Is everybody good with that?
All right.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Massengo, everybody. Okay. All right. Then we will speak with you at some point today.
Yeah.
All right. And just for everyone's procedure information, we have two specific boards that are here today. Before council can consider this UDC or even vote on this UDC, it has to come out of the PNC. So that's why we have them here today, so we can do this joint hearing. Thank you all again for being here. They will take this up. They will take any amendments, any information, any further information, ask questions. Once they present a final document to the council, then the council will do the same. And so this is likely not to be something that may be all done today. There are still, I think, things to continue to work through. I also would like to mention that as we sit here today, the, I know we've had a lot of questions about signs and outdoor signs and billboards. I think a lot of the information that's going on out there is probably incorrect. There's a lot of misinformation, I think, that's being spread about this. As we sit here today with the current UDC that's been proposed, the same exact ordinance for billboards and outdoor signs is in place. If that comes up as an amendment in the future, whether by PNC or by council, that may be determined. But as we sit here today, it is the exact same sign ordinance that has been in place for years and years. So at this time, and again, this is a joint public hearing to consider the adoption of the proposed Unified Development Code. This joint public hearing with PNC is conducted pursuant to 211.007D of the Texas Local Government Code. We will do this just like any other public hearing. I will open this up to those wishing to speak in opposition. If you are in opposition to the code, if you would specifically state what provision you are in opposition to as you come forward. If you will please state your name and address, even if we know who you are, if you don't mind doing that and keeping that clean for our record. And then I will have a few rules I would like to go through. We are allowed as a council and as, as board chairs, Mr. Sawyer and I, to make sure that people are not speaking too long, that they are not being unduly repetitious or extending discussions of irrelevancies. So that is, we are to keep this public hearing to the UDC because that's what we are here for today. We would request, ask that you stay on topic, not vary and go off-topic on other issues. Again, avoid repetition. If someone has already spoken on a position, maybe you could insinuate or state that you agree with their position, but what we would like to do is keep it from being unduly repetitious as we move forward. You can also ask someone to speak on your behalf or someone could speak for your certain position. So at this time, we will open up the public hearing and ask that anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of the UDC, they may step forward, and we will begin. Terry, before you begin, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
You may also find that council members or members of our board or you yourselves may get up from time to time to stretch the back or something. Please don't take any offense to that. I assure you that we are listening. Just some of us have backs that are 187 years old. All right.
If you'll bear with me for just a few minutes, I need to pass something out, please. I'm Terry Holman with Eagle Reid &amp; Associates. I'm speaking this morning, our address is 1601 Avenue N. I'm speaking this morning on behalf of a group of individuals. I'll go over that, our little group, in a moment. First of all, Chairman Sawyer, appreciate your time this morning as well as members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and also you, City Council, for allowing us this chance to speak. I'm not necessarily going to say that I'm in, in opposition to the UDC, but we do have concerns about the version that is before you this morning, and that's really the focus of what our presentation is. My job here is to maybe lay a little bit of the groundwork, and then I'm going to turn it over to my partner in crime, Mont McClendon, who's a member of our task force. Our task force, we are members of the Developers Council with the city. It is primarily comprised of Chris Berry with Beedenbow Homes, Corey Doolin with AMD Engineering, myself, and Mont McClendon with McDougall Companies, as well as you all know that Mont is the master downtown developer. We all have volunteered our time on this. We're not on any specific payroll for this. We are invested in this community and we're stakeholders, and we're the folks, along with your city staff and along with your Planning and Zoning Commission, who really will eat, sleep, and breathe this stuff daily for years to come. I want to kind of give you our resume a little bit. Thank you very much. We're all very experienced in land development consulting and land development. I've been practicing as a consultant for land developers for more than 30 years, been with my company for 40 years. I haven't done the math, but I would suspect that collectively our group of four comprise easily 80 or 90 years of development experience in the city of Lubbock. We, we've got a long history of knowing how things work here and how, how we envision Lubbock, you know, moving forward. Our objective, when reviewing this document, was not just to save ourselves a buck, right? Because we realize that there are things that we as a city, both on the private side and the public side, we can all do a little bit better. So this UDC in general gives us an opportunity to do that, and so we're, we're supportive of that. We want to develop in a way that, first of all, meets local market expectations, in a way that meets local environment, in a way that meets local terrain, in a way that provides a product that is truly sustainable and, and something we can all be proud of. We all began this process with you all back in, I really started in earnest back in 2020, early 2020. We've been involved in numerous page turns, hours and hours and hours of going through the documents to try to sort of flesh out what we think are the things that are, just doesn't work in Lubbock or things that we think, yeah, that, that, that may be a good idea. And we've all invested quite a lot of time. I want to say that the project didn't move along as quickly as we had hoped it would have over the previous years. I will certainly give a shout-out to Robbie Wallace and Kristin Sager. Over the last six months, this project, since they have really sort of taken over, this thing has finally really gained some momentum. And we've made, I will say that we've made probably more progress with this document and with your staff in the last six months than we had in the two and a half years prior. So we're moving in the right direction, right? We just don't believe we're quite there yet. There are things that cause us concern that we, we feel like we want to kind of flesh out. I'm not going to go through that 29-page document I handed out, okay? My friends know me for being a detail guy. We're, we're not going to do that this morning. But just in general, that, that document is sort of our last list of items that we felt like needed to be addressed. And candidly, some of those on that list, in discussions just in the last couple or three weeks, have really been put to bed. So even as recently as in the last month, we've gained a lot of traction with staff to help. As written, the document, I think it will increase the cost of development to some extent. We have more landscaping that's required, that dominoes into a loss of yield on a commercial site or residential setting. To be fair, there's less parking, so that helps offset that a little bit. That's great. We believe that the document is more complex than we had envisioned it being, and so there's going to be, I think, a steep learning curve for all of us on the private side as well as city staff, and I think that will add to the effort. We've had a lot of discussion about buffer yards. Make no mistake, at least what I have preached with our group and with our Developers Council, that as a city, we think we can all do better with respect to landscaping. And we're not asking to remove buffer yards, but we're asking you all to help us do that smartly. And some of the widths of the buffer yards and some of the tree requirements and some of that stuff may be more onerous than we feel like we can do here in Lubbock with our water conservation efforts, with, you know, with trying to make development economical. So we want to continue to work with your staff to develop something that we think is smart for Lubbock with respect to that. There are still a couple of head scratchers, as far as I'm concerned, with respect to the land uses in the matrix. The example that I've raised before is a helipad in an office setting. That's, I find that hard to fathom. The document itself has a few disconnects, which we think are just structural, which we think can be worked out. One of the examples I've raised recently is, you know, there are good tables in the document about, you know, setback requirements and those types of things, but if you're in the NC zoning district and if you, heaven forbid, decide to put parking in front of your building, you go about 200 pages later in the PDF document to say, well, timeout if there's parking in front of the building, you have to do this. And so there's some structural things in the document that we would hope could maybe get cleaned up. City engineering has been very good about helping us find ways to develop more effectively. They've decoupled engineering from the plating process, and while that's great for us, it allows us to record a plat maybe quicker than we would today. We also say careful what you wish for because that may create an environment where you have a lot of plats that are recorded and nothing really actually done with that. So we're supportive of that, the way the engineering department has laid that out, but it's a sort of an air of caution on that. So we feel like we've made a ton of progress. We also feel like we just have a few more steps to go to get to home plate. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I think I'd like to hand it over to Mont McLendon to add any comments that I may have missed. Thank you.
My name is Mont McLendon. I work at McDougal Companies at 1500 Broadway, and I live at 16th and Salem. I want to double down on Terry's thanking staff. This has been a lot of work, and in particular, Mr. Wallace, Ms. Sager, and I would add Mike Keenum to that, their input and participation, particularly in this last leg of this, has been invaluable. I want to remind or at least comment that this process was meant to align our regulatory regimes in large part with the comp plan.
Mr. McLendon, I've been asked to, if you'd want to step closer.
Step closer?
Yes, sir.
Well, this is as tall as I get, so I can get closer.
You can pull that microphone a little bit closer.
Yeah, and move it down.
And grow two inches.
So I only grow out. This was always going to be an endeavor to align our regulatory regimes on zoning and subdivision and plating with the comp plan. There's lots of reasons to align those things with the comp plan under state law. I think we all understand that. But in the comp plan, we had identified some policy considerations, including meeting an unmet need for mixed-use development. We needed to align our efforts overall with our master thoroughfare plan, with our master drainage plan, eventually with our master parks plan. It's just always going to be a colossal task, and it has been a colossal task. There were policy considerations in there as well related to buffering, and as Mr. Holman said, we are sympathetic and understand, particularly in instances where you have adjacencies to heavy industrial uses, the need to buffer, that makes sense, and we needed to build that into the code. Addressing mixed use in particular, we have a sea change in regards to downtown, where we move into mixed-use districts, but we also move from form-based, or to form-based zoning from land-use style zoning. And I wanted to say that within the four corners of those regulations as a whole, I think we have done a good job. I think they reflect the fabric of downtown. I think they empower mixed uses downtown that's part and parcel of what we've done and asked for in the comp plan. I will say that I think we've missed a couple opportunities in regards to mixed use. The first is, we have six mixed-use zones, five of them downtown, two of them with no material difference between them. They are distinctions without differences, another with one measurement difference between. So we are doubling down somewhat on some complexity downtown, where I think that was done needlessly. The second opportunity I think we have missed is that we do not have any mixed-use districts that are untethered from the fabric of downtown. We don't have an opportunity to build some best practices around commercial-first or residential-first mixed use that could be used to draw a circle around a parcel of land outside of downtown. And I think there's going to be opportunities for, you know, walkable mixed use uses in each of your districts, and we don't have that built into the code today. I don't know that we're going to get there between now and when this is presented to you again, but I do want to lay in some wooden water to come back to you at some point with those concepts in place. Outside of mixed use, through this process, we have, and I have tried to advocate for flexible and permissive zoning districts. The downside of that potentially is that there are times when you look at a district on paper, you file an application, the neighbors get that definition, and suddenly the torches and pitchforks come out. Because while the developer might not be asking for the entirety of what that zone allows, that is not always, that's cold comfort for some. So I've advocated for an opportunity perhaps to make a lesser ask as part of what we build legislatively, and I've given that to staff. I want to say that the published draft is significant progress from where we started. I know that the consultant received more comments from our locality than I think they have ever anywhere, and that's because we care. And I joked with Terry yesterday that we haven't had a wholesale reimagining of our zoning regime since the 70s, and that's probably because about once in a lifetime isn't enough. I had a full head of hair when we started, and I no longer do. While we've made significant progress in the published draft, I think it still lacks polish. There's things that it needs. The staff has compiled, to my understanding, over two dozen items of errata that's not reflected in this draft. Terry handed you a 29-page things of things where we think, where we've made recommendations, in many instances, small movements, small tweaks. Since publication, we have spent a non-trivial amount of time with staff, and I think in large part have arrived at a consensus on most of those things, making this code look like and function like Lubbock. None of those things are reflected in the public's draft. So I would encourage council, and I would hope that P and Z would take an opportunity to make a final recommendation that is closer to that consensus, that deals with that errata, rather than move forward on what was published today. I'm encouraged by the ground that we've made. I'm excited about the code that we will make, but I think we just, it needs a little more, to use the cooking analogy, it needs a little more time in the oven. And so that concludes my comments unless there's questions.
Just to remind everyone, we're speaking in opposition to Agenda Item 2.
I'm going to need to raise this up from what Mont had. Good morning. Mayor Payne, members of City Council, Chairman Sawyer, and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. For the record, my name is Trey Strong, and I reside at 4207 104th Street. I come today on behalf of the West Texas Home Builders Association and our Developers Council to share our thoughts and perspectives on the proposed Unified Development Code, the UDC. Home building generates substantial local economic activity, including new income and jobs for residents and additional revenue for local governments. To give you a brief idea of the impact, our association commissioned a study of the economic impact of one square mile of new development in the city of Lubbock. For example, the development of 1,312 single-family homes in one square mile east of Milwaukee in its initial year generated $309 million in local income, $4.5 million in taxes for local governments, and 4,228 local jobs. The additional recurring income of those same homes on an annual basis generates $52.2 million in local income a year and $24.3 million in taxable revenues and adds another 900 local jobs. The Unified Development Code directly impacts our day-to-day operations and ultimately our ability to serve the needs of Lubbock citizens and businesses. With this being said, representatives from our association have worked extensive hours, as you've heard, over the last two years, and most recently spent numerous man-hours with city staff to formulate a version of the UDC that serves the needs of our city while also fostering a sensible and equitable process for home building and land development in West Texas. I personally want to thank the work of Robbie Wallace, Kristin Sager, and Eric Rehanio. While we may not see eye to eye on everything, they as city staff have been welcoming representatives for this body and are always open to listening to our concerns. It is with my specific request that the commission and council recognize that the work has been done and shore up the remaining items that are of the requests from our association. While we understand this is a document our council would like to pass, it is one that adds additional restrictions on our ability to do our job. It does not make it easier or less expensive in any way, shape, or form. Our request specifically asks for changes that don't add onerous requirements or unnecessary financial obligations to solve nonexistent problems. We are proud partners in the development and growth of the city, and we understand this document is living document and will need to change as we work through potential road bumps. But we ask that you please take the time to adopt the proposed amendments from our representatives to squash any issues that are known and present at this time. We truly hope the commission and council will consider our requested recommendations and continue to be a partner with us for the future of Lubbock. If you all have any questions on the specifics of the request, I ask that you please direct those to our representatives. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Good morning. My name is Dora Cortez, and I reside at 217 North Avenue O in the Guadalupe neighborhood area. I am here today because I am opposed to the proposed UDC document, and this is a document that I was working off of, so that is what I will refer to. First, I would like to say that I have attended most of the modules presented by the consultants. I attended two of the three public meetings held last year on this topic, and I also wrote a letter to the UDC committee. Sometime during 2020 or 2021 during the COVID, some residents from both North and East Lubbock held Zoom meetings with the former mayor, asking for him for consideration on some of our needs regarding future land use map, rezoning of industrial and manufacturing facilities in our neighborhoods, recommendations presented to impose a moratorium on expansion and new development of manufacturing and industrial in our neighborhoods, commit to downsizing current vacant, abandoned, and non-operational M1 and M2 properties in and around our neighborhoods, and put in place a moratorium. The UDC document proposes 12 months under abandoned until it must comply with current zoning. We currently have abandoned facilities, M1 or M2, that fall under this category in our neighborhoods. The recommendation, more beneficial for those residing in North and East Lubbock, where heavy industry is much more common, would be six months abandoned property time. Those of us who have lived in North and East Lubbock for most of our lives, and I am a sixth-generation resident, have had to put up with these facilities all of our lives. Once we start looking at the land use map, we want to start listing those M1, M2 industrial sites that are abandoned and start the process of removing those unsightly and undesirable industrial facilities from our neighborhoods. The problem that North and East Lubbock residents see, and I've seen it since I was a little girl growing up in this neighborhood, is that growth and expansion of industrial sites seem to only be happening in minority neighborhoods. Under discontinued use in the case of property destruction, the proposed CDU document indicates rebuilding after destruction from disaster must conform to new zoning rules if rebuilding exceeds 75% of replacement cost. Again, that is more beneficial, again, what is more beneficial for the people that reside in North and East Lubbock, where heavy industry facilities are more common, the recommendation under discontinued use in the case of property destruction is that for non-conforming use, a facility or structure cannot rebuild if damage is greater than 50% of the market value. This would be much more advantageous to the residents of North and East Lubbock. While we are talking about destruction from disaster, the last disaster that caused great damage and loss of life is coming up this May 11th and will mark 53 years. During these 53 years, we have seen development and growth of new industrial facilities and expansion of existing facilities in our neighborhoods. Other small disasters experienced in our neighborhood include the Gandy's ammonia leak and the Bear Foundation leak. Those were only hazardous chemical leaks, and no buildings were destroyed or lost of lives. Some of our elderly residents complained of breathing problems, and it was an inconvenience for residents because in both cases, in both instances, we were asked to evacuate our homes. In my opinion, the percentage that is proposed in the draft is high and works to the advantage of the facility should a disaster occur which continues to leave the neighborhoods at a disadvantage. We have had to live with noise, odors, smoke, noxious material, toxic fumes, pollutants in our lives, and because industrial manufacturing facilities are in our backyard, our quality of life is not the same as in other parts of the city. The UDC proposes under amortization for termination ordinances, ordinance, none. In the proposed UDC draft for amortization, termination, ordinance, citation, and link, none. The UDC proposes under tax of amortization ordinance, again, none. In order for North and East Lubbock residents to consider themselves part of this city, we must consider amortization. We have no hope of anything changing if we come to the table on the future land use map and amortization is not included. It is imperative for future generations, my grandchildren and the grandchildren, and my great-grandchildren, to know that these M1 and M2 factories will be relocated or removed from our neighborhoods at a future date, whether that be eight years from now or 10 years. Amortization has to be considered and included in order for us to feel that we are a valued asset to this city. The 2040 Future Land Use Map recommends that all of the area around McAllister Park be rezoned from industrial to commercial. And I don't know whether those who are here in the audience know where McAllister Park is located, but it is east of Milwaukee, south of Marsha Sharp Freeway, north of Spur 327, and west of Frankfurt Avenue. Currently, it has baseball fields, Legacy Park Village, and construction is underway for milestone development and play park. The reason I bring this up is because the current zoning map has those areas zoned for industrial, but it has not been used that way. Our neighborhood, in our neighborhoods, we have the Lubbock High Baseball Fields, Northwest Little League Fields, and Buddy Holly Lake, and currently to And currently, to the west and to the northeast, you can see and smell the fumes, smoke, and noxious odors that are discharged from these industrial facilities. McAllister Park does not have any industrial or manufacturing facilities. In February, there was a request for a zoning change on demolition of Cafe J and Gold Bolt Center. Planning and zoning voted in favor of the development, which had to do with student housing. But when the vote really counted, you, the council, voted in favor of the tech terrace residents. The reason I mention this is because clearly, the residents of North and East Lubbock do not feel like our neighborhoods are getting equal and fair representation. We see a big disparity that exists in our city. Our residents in our neighborhoods need you to reconsider the recommendations in the proposed UDC draft. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Good morning, members of the council and Planning and Zoning Commission. For the record, my name is Jim Bertram. I reside at 57 South Lakeshore Drive in Ransom Canyon. However, I was a citizen of Lubbock for 32 years from 1970 through 2001, and I served as Director of City Planning for the city of Lubbock. I would like to address my comments on behalf of a number of citizens that have retained me and also have asked me, the Lubbock Heritage Society, and others to represent them in opposition to any changes in the current code for regulation of billboards for specific use, zone cases, and light industrial are under the new classification, general industrial. Mayor indicated there was some misinformation, and I think that's because the final draft of the Unified Development Code regarding billboards is an error. The written section says one thing, and the land use matrix says something else. If you went by the land use matrix, it would basically open the city up. Under the new classifications, the limited use in neighborhood commercial, in automobile urban commercial, in office commercial, in heavy commercial, in light industrial and general industrial, they would all be allowed. So to say that the city would be opened up to billboard proliferation is an absolute true statement. Now, one of the most disturbing things that we have learned in preparing for the hearing was that some council members have indicated that there's a concern that the current code for specific use is possibly discriminatory or unfair to East Lubbock, to the council districts one and two specifically. I think that claim is simply not true, and in fact, just the opposite is true for the following reasons. Billboards currently are not permitted in these zones. They require a zone case, where citizens have a voice and the council members get a vote. Under the Billboard Industries Proposed Amendments, which, by the way, I received a copy of through the Open Records Act, and the council has copies of, that proposal would not allow any council input, any planning and zoning commission input, and citizens would have no voice in the process. Over the past five years, 11 billboard zone cases have been filed in West Lubbock, and all have been denied. The only one that came close to East Lubbock was the one north of the civic center, and it was denied. So no zone cases that I'm aware of have been filed in East Lubbock during the same period. And recent surveys show that 81% of all existing billboards are in West Lubbock, not East Lubbock. And recently, I've heard the billboard advocates try to convince those in East Lubbock that they're discriminatory while, at the same time, they try to convince those in West Lubbock that they're good for business and that every, every commercial development needs several of them. But the existing zoning requirements for specific use zoning requiring public hearing and P&amp;Z council approval is the only real safeguard that either East or West Lubbock have. The proposed Billboard Industry amendments that I become aware of through the Open Records Act, on the other hand, would cut out public hearings and make billboards permitted in every single residential, neighborhood commercial, automobile urban commercial, office commercial, all of the industrial would make them permitted. I have a map here, and by the way, in just a moment, I'll try to be brief. I overlaid the possibility of new billboards over the council districts and actually found that the Billboard Industries recommendation places more billboards in council districts one and two than the rest of the council districts put together. This is a map. It shows basically the corridors that any billboards would go into if they were permitted in those commercial zones that I was talking about. These are the corridors, the new Loop 88 corridor, Clovis Highway, I-27, the Marsha Sharp, the entire loop, and Spur 327. And if you took the Billboard Industries' proposal that they've submitted to the council and calculated, that would add 184 frontage miles that billboards could go in on. Think about that for a minute. That's the distance from Lubbock to Abilene. And not only open up all these areas, and most of Loop 88 is not even in the city limits yet, but the comprehensive plan shows that much of it is going to be neighborhood commercial, which is a zone that billboards would be permitted in under the Billboard Industries' recommendation. But I indicated that I had overlaid the proposal, Billboard Industries' proposal over the council districts, and it won billboard per every 2,000 feet. District one at a minimum could get 46 billboards. Council District two could get 22. Council District three could get nine. Council District four could get 17. Council District five could get 19, and Council District six could get eight for 122. Because billboards, in our opinion, are larger, higher, and have less restrictive setback and design standards, they unfairly compete with existing building signs all over the city. I asked before the meeting if we could show a copy of the official new zoning map we're supposed to be adopting today as a part of this process, and I was told it couldn't be put up on the screen. So the only option is to look at the paper copies around the, see, but if you looked at the red, lavender, purple, gray, and blue places on that map, every one of them would accommodate new billboards. So when we say that the city could be overrun, that is not an exaggeration. As far as recommendations is one, if the UDC is adopted, include the corrected billboard section requiring specific use in light industrial and general industrial. This safeguards the council, P&amp;Z, and citizens having input and a voice for the people during public hearings. And if the council wants to know if Lubbock citizens would support a proposal to add between 240 to 480 new billboards via the Billboard Industries' proposal, then hold a referendum, find out what the people want, just like they did back in the 70s. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them for you.
Thank you, Mr. Bertram.
Good morning. My name is Albert Gillespie. I work for Rebus Capital. We are in the apartment industry. I'm also the current president of the Lubbock Apartment Association. I live at Frankfurt in 1585, also work at 82nd and Upland. So I'm not opposing the UDC per se, but as many before me, I think there's work to be My overarching sentiment is that it's not ready. In my industry, in multifamily, we're going from four types of zoning to two. Because of that, the two zoning types have to, have to be more permissive. It's either this or this. That'll make zoning cases more contentious, more labor-intensive, and overall more difficult, which will result in less development in the areas we potentially need it the most. That contention is really unnecessary and, I assume, undesired from every side. So we need an option to make a lesser ask. We need an option to be more granular in our zoning request, to give a better picture and allow more understanding, which will take some of that contention out. Ask my wife, anytime I communicate more and more clearly, there's a little less contention at my house. The second point I wanted to bring up is, as it reads currently, there are no parking requirements in the published MDR zoning. There's no requirements written. While this may be an oversight, it suggests that the draft isn't ready. While there's certainly pros and cons to the proposed draft as it compares to the current code, I feel there are several cons that will prevent development from occurring, which will hurt housing affordability for our Lubbock citizens. So, short and sweet, I feel like there's more work to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillespie.
Good morning. I believe there's a PowerPoint presentation that Joe McKay had dropped off. Could somebody put that on there? I know I don't quite look like Joe McKay, but I'm... I'll just click, scroll down. Good morning. My name's Mary Kreitz. I'm at 4617 8th Street, and I too want to start with, thank you, each of you, for the tireless work that you do. I know we can't pay you enough for what you do, but we, I appreciate it. I want to start, again, with billboards, and I, Mayor, I do appreciate you saying that the intent is to not change what's in the current code. But in an abundance of caution, I do want to show some slides that I think are important to remember about why we have the billboard ordinance and what it's done for us over the I want to start with what I consider a visionary statement, and it was made by Louise Majin as part of the, she was the chairperson for the Goals of the 70s. She said, can everybody, oh, you guys are the only ones who can see this, so is the, Kristen, can the, can the audience not see the slides I'm going to show? Okay, okay, perfect, I'm sorry. So Louise Majin, in the 70s, as chairperson of the Goals for the 70s, here's what she said. "Inasmuch as the quality of life of an entire citizenry can be affected by the quality of its surroundings, we believe the beauty of the environment is a subtle but all persuasive influence in the cultural atmosphere of the city. An area such as Lubbock without great natural interest of beauty must create its own." Let me repeat that, because I think that's, that's the whole crux here. "An area such as Lubbock without great natural interest of beauty must create its own. Its citizens must aggressively begin to control, direct, and plan with imagination, taste, and selflessness if they are to have a city which is designed for beauty and functional That's her quote. "Our beauty must come from our built environment. A proliferation of billboards does not add beauty to our built environment. It is not a positive. It does not speak well of us." Before, before the billboard ordinance in 1976, this is an image of 19th and University. So today, Lubbock currently has 243 billboards. If current requirements are eased, that number could double in five or 10 years. This photograph shows what it looked like before 1976. This photograph shows after. Isn't this a better, more clearer image of our city? The 243 billboards, to me, seems like enough. What I really like about this image is you get to see one of our iconic buildings, Lubbock High School. You can't see it there, it's covered up. If, if changes are to be, if changes to our current sign ordinance are allowed, we could easily return to Lubbock's negative visual image that existed before our ordinance. Again, here's a before picture. What you see are all signs, it's all clutter. And here's that same image today. Don't we want our city to look more like this? Here's another before. "If you adopt the UDC, please make sure that the sign requirements do not differ from what we have today. We don't want to go back to look like this. We want to look more like that, which is what we have today." Again, here is a before, and here is after. Do you want billboards in front of our new Buddy Holly Hall? That's a good example of what could happen. As Louise Majin said, "Lubbock without great natural beauty must create its own." Those words are true. I want to close with a quote from a very knowledgeable man about development. According to Bloomberg, Gerald Hines Company in 2019 held property and asset management holdings in excess of $133 billion in over 200 cities, and is considered one of the top 10 retail, real estate companies that there are. He knows what he's talking about. This quote is enlightening. "I think there is a place for billboards to be designated, but not to destroy the view. I think that billboard industry is tunnel vision. I think that in many cases, they are not thinking of the overall good of the community. That's why we have laws, so we need some things to protect the citizenry." I believe that Louise Majin and Gerald Hines have it right. I think Lubbock has it right with our sign, current sign ordinance. Please do not ease the requirements on billboards in Lubbock. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kreitz.
Morning, council. Adam Hernandez, 7401 Avenue X. I am also the Communications Chair on the Board of Lubbock Compact for whom I speak this morning. So I'd like to just echo pretty much what most of the folks have been saying as far as just appreciating council, planning and zoning, everybody that's been involved in this, on the staff, and the various departments. I think that a lot of time, energy, and obviously, resources have been spent on this, and so if we've come this far, I think we need to take the extra steps to get it right. And you've heard some of those concerns. I would just like to double down on what Ms. Dora was talking about, and I know... I would just like to double down on what Ms. Dora was talking about, and I know you all knew I was going to bring this up, but I have to every time until it's done. So, in Plan Lubbock 2040, it was showing up on the screen, a couple of those aims of that document, which is a document I've spent probably more time than I wanted to looking at, and those are to promote health and general welfare, that is to say, health, safety, and quality of life of our citizens and our communities. And that means the whole city. The other thing is to provide adequate light and air, again, for our communities, so that the quality of life in those communities is good, right? Lubbock is a great place to live, and we've got some kinks here that are in our power to iron out, and I think that we should do those. And so, I'll get the easy one out of the way first. Lubbock Compact is really advocating on two things here. The mixed-use overlay districts is something you all know that we've advocated heavily for, and I'm glad to see so much of that has been put in here. I will agree with Mr. McClendon that those mixed-use opportunities should be expanded outside of the downtown area. This is something we've talked about for a long time, something that a lot of people in the city talk about a lot of time. We all love downtown, we all understand the importance of the downtown area and the historical relevance of it, but we also have a whole city outside of that. And so we shouldn't, in essence, pick winners and losers in that way. So that's the easy one. I, I would encourage you all to look at that and look at expanding that outside of the downtown area. All right. Now to the more complicated one. And Ms. Dora has brought it up, and that's amortization. So I have said it many times and will continue to say it because it's the absolute truth. Our city staff is the best, and any challenge that is put before them, they'll handle it and come out brilliantly, okay? And so there's been a lot of cities that have put amortization, coincidentally, in their UDC. That's where a lot of this goes. And in particular, in the remedies, the enforcement and remedies section is where this would go. So that's what it would look like from a policy perspective. Now, when Lubbock Compact talks about amortization and the, a future where industrial sites don't exist near neighborhoods where they are right now, a lot of folks get up in arms, and I understand that. So I'd like to clarify that what we mean is, the city should move in a direction openly that lets the citizenry know that we need to eventually, and we're not saying tomorrow or next week or next month, it's going to take a long time, but we have to take the steps to get there. So we need to make the statement as a city, at every opportunity we have, to say, we're moving to, toward a future where industrial sites are not right up against residential, whether they've been there for 80 years or not. We have to make that resolution, because you can't, if you don't know where you're going, you don't know how to get there, all right? So once we make that resolution, then there's steps to get there. And there's examples, there's precedent set all over the state of cities that have done this. And so I refuse to believe that our brilliant staff here cannot handle putting amortization in our UDC. The second thing I'll say about that is that amortization is simply a tool. We're building a toolbox here, or a palette, if you will, for developers and also for the city, of how we're going to use our land. In order to be best equipped for a job, you want all the tools that you can have that pertain to that job. If we leave amortization out of our toolbox, that sets us up for failure. It also says to the citizens of Guadalupe, Jackson-Mahan, Dunbar Manhattan Heights, Chapman Hill, it says to them that you guys still don't matter to the City of Lubbock after all this time. And I'll explain what I mean. Sometimes, like when we do a UDC, we're doing things for the right reasons. And I think that in our modern era, I think that a lot of the folks that exist here in our city and that are on the dais and in our community, I don't believe that many of them hold the same beliefs, I'm sure some do, but I don't think many people in our city hold the same beliefs that the council did when they passed an ordinance that put those industrial sites next to those neighborhoods. It's not because people wanted the jobs, it's not because the railroads were there, the railroads follow the industry. It was specifically outlined in our city code that those were put there because Black and Hispanic people pollute the atmosphere. And so if you want to have some industry or some building that pollutes the atmosphere, well, you shouldn't put that next to good neighborhoods. You should put that next to neighborhoods where the people themselves pollute the atmosphere. Now, I don't think any of you believe that today, I would hope not. And so that being the case, and that, the case being that we're now in 2023, and we're moving forward with modern zoning, we need to take a modern approach to this. The biggest reason, obviously, is this is a public safety issue. There's been a, there's been research done out of tech that showed that there's a higher level of people who have asthma and breathing conditions coming from the northeast quadrants of the city, and so we have that data. That then led to Lubbock Compact being able to get a half a million dollar grant, which will soon be rolling out, to test the air quality across the city. So there's a real issue here, that we can't bury our head in the sand about any longer. Buffer yards are a good idea. I, I do commend Kendi Keast and others for trying to do the best they can against the opposition to amortization and trying to give some concession there. They're a good idea doesn't mean they're sufficient, they're insufficient. It also doesn't take care of non-conforming uses, once you pass this, they will be non-conforming uses. It doesn't take care of the ones that exist today. And when you look at the cottonseed oil plant or concrete batch plants, I don't know that a grove of trees is going to cut it, okay, for those people that have lived there forever. So, to wrap this up, our proposal is this. Include an amortization clause in the UDC. It changes nothing at this point. All it says is that the City of Lubbock has that tool in their toolbox to use when it's appropriate, and I want to highlight that, when it's appropriate. This is going to take a very long time, we understand that, but you've got to take these steps, all right? So include amortization clause in the UDC. I've heard that it's, amortization can be complicated. Carrying it out can be complicated, but it's very uncomplicated when you go look at the other cities that have included the amortization clause. You can quite simply go and copy it and just adapt it just to Lubbock City Code to make sure it fits. It's pretty simple. You don't have to adjudicate every case of, you know, amortization that you may have down the line. So it's not actually that complicated at this point. The second thing that we would like to propose at the City Council, again, this is another step, another showing by the city that these communities matter. It's already been mentioned by Dora, it's been mentioned by us many times in City Council, that there are lots of abandoned industrial sites already. I can think of one right now that's at 19th and Avenue A, that has been there my entire 42 years in this city. And I can tell you for at least 10 years it's been abandoned, I don't know, it's been a long time, all right? You can change those sites that are already abandoned, change that zoning to transitional. And what that does is, it's, it provides a layer of protection by letting developers know, or future developers, or people that may come, who don't know anything about Lubbock and may want to come start a business here, that you cannot come onto that use and put another industrial site there, okay? So that's one safeguard it does. It also does the thing, like I said, very important, to build trust between the council and the, and the community. It shows again that we're taking those steps to, to move away from that. The third and final thing, obviously, is just to include some expanded opportunities for mixed-use districts outside of downtown area, and I would defer to the folks who work in that industry, as well as the many community groups who are concerned with those issues, to, to work out what does that look like? And again, we'll just echo what has already been said, it's not quite ready yet. I, I think a lot of great work has been done, but if we've come this far, we might as well finish it right. And so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Good morning, Mayor, good morning, Council. My name is Drew Gray with Stellar Development Company and past president of Lubbock Apartment Association at 6502 Slide Road. Again, I want to echo what others have said, that this has been a incredibly arduous and difficult process, and incredible progress has been made to this point. However, we're not quite there yet, as many others have said. And so today, I'm speaking not in opposition, but in a hope to encourage everyone to finish strong here on this UDC. We've done work in Lubbock for a long time, we've done work in other cities throughout Texas now, more recently as well, with newly adopted UDCs. And so we've seen it done well, and we've seen it done maybe not quite as well. And I think that there are a few key components of this UDC that were accidentally maybe left out or omitted that I'd like to see put back in. As Mr. Gillespie mentioned earlier, we had four zoning districts for multifamily previously, and now we're going down to effectively two multifamily districts, being medium-density residential and high-density residential. Previously, in A1 zoning, we were able to have a low-density land use, where we could do a single or two-story project. It would be a minimal impact to surrounding users, and traditionally was an easy path forward for everybody, and everybody was on board with it. Currently, in MDR and HDR, there is no option for that. And so I think consideration needs to be taken on a potentially lower use, or a less intensive use, option there on that district, so we can have a path forward that makes more sense. Secondly, MDR does not by permit or just by right allow multifamily within the district. We would have to go through a, a master development plan in order to allow multifamily in that district. That seems problematic to me, because the goal of the UDC is to be efficient, and is to decrease development costs, and to create a roadmap that's clear and consistent, and we feel that that's taking away from that mission. And so, lastly, high-density residential was really meant to be put in place to replace the current A3 zoning district, as far as I understand. A3 currently allows up to 60 feet in height, okay? So that's a four-to-five-story apartment complex. And so in certain areas, that makes a lot of sense. Well, and currently in HDR, as it's written, it only allows and permits up to 45 feet in height, which is effectively really a three-story building. And so we decreased the height restriction when we went to HDR. And in order to go back up above 45 feet in HDR, we would have to go through a master development plan again. And so again, this requires extensive studies, engineers involved, expenses, risk on a deal. And we all know that we don't need to have more costs put into development and have more time put back in. It already takes long enough and costs too much. And so those are my specific requests today, and I thank y'all for hearing me, and I thank all the members of the council, P&amp;Z, and city staff for working so hard on this. I know it's not easy, and you've had a lot of, lot of commentary, and so I thank y'all for that, and just ask that we continue to push forward and finish strong here. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Good morning. My name is Mark Hill. I reside at 5512 104th Street here in Lubbock. I am president of the 555 Initiative that was started after January the 11th of 2020. I'm here to talk about signs, because our initiative is all about communication. We, we have a message to put out, and we have worked with some sign companies, and they have been very good to work with us to help us spread our message. It's a message of keeping first responders safe on the roadway, it's a message of keeping drivers safe on the roadway. And we, we want to be able to keep that message out in front of drivers as much as we can across all of the city, whether it be, especially with our city growing to the south and the east, that I think it's imperative that we can get our message out there as well as anywhere else. We're, and when else is a better time to, to get our message out than when you're in your car and you look up, and maybe you see a 555, or just see something about that that says, maybe I need to drive a little bit different at this moment? Maybe it's about an accident or something that's happening at that time. So I just want to encourage with the sign ordinance that we spread that out across our city, and there's more to it than just advertising and things like that, that there is, there are some things out there that are, that are very important that need to be spread as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Randy Christian, 5305 86th Street. I'll start with by sharing that the last six or seven days I've spent in the Austin-San Antonio area, and I couldn't get back fast enough. Spent a few days in my wife's hometown of Georgetown. The rapid growth, and I think uncontrollable growth, has completely killed that beautiful little city that I've been going to back and forth for the last 40 years of our marriage. With that in mind, that's the reason the UDC and what, what you do with it moving forward is so important for us today and tomorrow, and especially for our grandchildren and our great-grandchildren. I have to thank my former colleague, Ms. Joy, for leading the charge into us going over, most over the, almost in the entire 450 pages of the UDC. It's a complex, and maybe that's an understatement, document, that I'm sure council members have gone through those 450 pages of that document as well. If you don't, just say yes, and we'll, we'll go from, we'll go from there. What I've heard today, and it's changed a little bit, and I'll get to the point of what I'm really wanting to get to in a minute, but having heard the different people come here and speak, I challenge council, and I challenge the rest of P&amp;Z, to question everything you've heard this morning. Assume nothing. Do your own homework. Validate or dispute information that has been given to you this morning. Having been a councilman, I do truly believe that that's your job, and it's important. The UDC, as I joke about before, it's everything between carports and playa lakes and everything in between, but the technical, the, the technical part of it also has a domino effect. What one thing you talk about or you want to implement, it's going to affect multiple things down the road on most parts. I think that's something that needs to be considered and you need to look at. But I'm really here to ask y'all to, one of my, one of my pet projects, or pet things that, when I was on the council, and that involves murals, specifically downtown murals. It may seem like that, that this is an insignificant part of the, the growth of Lubbock, but in my opinion, it's an important part of the continued redevelopment of our downtown. And we do have billboards, I mean, we do have murals, of course, but there are a few things that I think that need to be looked at, reviewed, and, and possibly changed in regards to the size that are available, size of, of murals that can be on buildings downtown, and also how it relates to bricks and masonry, that can be, things that can be put on those buildings. Removing those restrictions will allow Lubbock to join most other Texas cities and cities across the country to have large spectacular murals, beautiful art, and also depictions of our local culture and heritage and history. Maybe even an artist representation on the side of a building, or of our beloved buddy Holly, and maybe even Patrick Mahomes. Lastly, almost every person that I've talked to under the age of 40 would love to see that, that there would be the opportunity for those larger murals that we see in other cities in our downtown. I think that's what they want to see in this downtown. Those... Those murals will add to the energy and the dynamic and the fun part of what the urban experience that they want and are looking for. Please look at that. Very minor changes, but it could have a major impact on what and how murals can be created in downtown. I know that there will be some to talk about, that it could be, it could be an advertisement. Many of y'all know what I did for a living. I love advertising, but it can still be done tastefully. And I think community standards will make sure that we don't get something on those side of those buildings that we would not be proud of and we would not want other visitors to see. I just, lastly, want to thank the P&amp;Z. Y'all have a tough, it's probably the toughest committee that's a part of the city. Thank you for your time and your energy. It's, and as y'all say, you never win. There's always going to be a loser when y'all are doing some things and making decisions. And staff, I want to thank staff that answered many of my questions most recently because I wanted to make sure that I was current on updates or any different changes that have taken place regarding the UDC since I was on council. And council, as I said, I'll just say it, question everything, really question everything and drill deep. Because I truly believe that with this UDC, maybe we can avoid becoming that crazy hill country that people seem to love but has truly got out of hand. We don't want to be Austin, and it just breaks my heart. We don't want to be Georgetown anymore either. But I do believe that these changes, and you look at them, will make for downtown that our young people, young professionals, our college students, that urban environment, that urban experience that they're looking for, and they will come down. And as they say, you build it, they will come. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Christian.
My name is Gretchen Scott. I live at 4012 69th Street, and this is kind of a spur-of-the-moment talk, and I, like some of my colleagues, have brought this up numerous times, and I realize that residential codes are not necessarily being addressed at this time. But I've had interactions with the staff and the codes department, and our codes on paper, the exact wording of our codes on paper really look like they address every issue, and they're good. But when it comes to enforcing them, they appear to be subject to some interpretations that I have never been shown in writing. And I think with most residents in Lubbock, and I totally understand the developers and everybody having concerns, but most citizens in Lubbock are concerned with their neighborhoods and protecting their neighborhoods. And we have public nuisance ordinance, business ordinances, and like I said, on paper, they're good, but they are not enforced to the letter of the codes on paper. And so I'm hoping that we can upgrade and tighten up our residential codes to where they're not subject to interpretation but are subject to the letter of the law, and will protect especially, I live inside the loop, you know, many of us do live inside the loop, and we'd like our neighborhoods to look as nice and as well-cared-for and as free from businesses as any other neighborhood in Lubbock. So that's my concern, and so I'm hoping that we can address our residential codes, and I would certainly volunteer to be on any committee that would like to hear citizens' input on residential codes. And that's, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, committee, staff, thank y'all for taking the time to listen to us this morning. My name is Trevor Fields. I'm here on behalf of Lamar Advertising and would like to discuss signs, more specifically off-premise signs, also known as-
Could you please state your address also?
My address is in Amarillo, but I'm here as a stakeholder, as Lamar Advertising operating in the city of Lubbock. Many members of my staff reside here in Lubbock, and we're an active part of the community. So just to discuss the off-premise, in the current proposed published version of the UDC, our industry is limited to primarily districts 1 and 2. Currently, under specific use permits, we have opportunity in M1 and M2-zoned areas with council blessing. What we would like to, I would like to echo the sentiments of many to go before me this morning that with the proposed published UDC, we're just not quite there yet. I think that there's still things to be considered and proposed amendments to be taken into consideration with this. I understand over the past five years, there have been numerous conversations in proposed corridors, specific areas for out-of-home and off-premise signs to be a part of this UDC, and I think that we still have to consider that. Historically, Lamar, specifically, members of our competitors, just the out-of-home industry, has provided tens of thousands of dollars to the city in support of efforts and messages that they're trying to get across, as well as hundreds of thousands of dollars of support in local nonprofit campaigns and to help spread their messages and provide awareness to the community. As the proposed UDC sits with LI and GI limited to districts 1 and 2, off-premise signs are not allowed to grow with the city. As an industry, we understand that this has to be a give-and-take relationship, that we would like an amicable way to move forward. We understand that there has to be restrictions. Our intent is never to put a sign on every corner. Our intent is to support the city, to support the businesses of this city, to support the citizens of this city. And without the ability to continue to grow as the city continues to move south and west, our ability to assist those businesses and the members of this community is limited as well. We understand that there are certain parts of the city that we don't want a presence in due to, I mean, we take Marsha Sharp for example. It cuts through the heart of the city, and it's Texas Tech, it's the stadium, it's multiple businesses, it's apartments, it's, every facet of this community is represented there. We don't want to obstruct any of that. We don't want to come in and plant a sign every 700 feet. We don't want to plant a sign every 1,500 feet. But we would like the opportunity to grow with the development of this city. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that anybody may have and entertain the restrictions that help this city keep its presence as is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fields.
Mr. Mayor, councilman, ladies and gentlemen, audience and staff, my name is Lenis Fareed. I'm, I guess you could say, an immigrant to Lubbock, Texas, but my wife was born and raised here. She lived at 36, 2632 East Bayland. I have relatives over in East Lubbock, friends in North Lubbock. I have concerns that everybody has mentioned but, to me, seem to beat around the bush. My concern is about the human life, the human impact of these zonings and the industries. I created a little definition that's kind of paraphrased, hopefully, of what you guys are saying about zoning. And that says zoning is land management that should not go together with residential area based on standards, on how structure, industries, and property industry near human lives or human being can be used. My definition of what I think and from what I got from Webster Dictionary, human lives is a person, especially as distinguished from other animals and/or represented the human species. Humans need certain things physically to survive, like food, water, shelter. Beyond that, however, we also deserve to be treated with respect and have the freedom to do the things that we want to do as long as it does not harm others. To say that is a basic universal declaration of human rights preamble. I try not to get off-base, but this is in relationship to the industries that are close to East Lubbock, North Lubbock, and the impacts that it does to the children, does to the seniors, and does to the environment. For example, according to a Texas Tech graduate by the name of Jason Michael Post, he did a thesis in geology, a geographic, as on May 2014 stated, that the lack of due credit is given to local issues and history governing of inequality phenomena. He suggested that the outside agencies should be further inspected of human rights violation, health, safety, that will be considered not violated due to those that are, that have the money and the influence to say so. I know Lubbock wants to build and grow, but from what I'm seeing from the outside looking in, it's growing in the opposite direction away from the people that is also playing a part to make Lubbock as great as it is. And I'm talking about North Lubbock, Guadalupe area, East Lubbock. Those people come to work for all other industries and all businesses within Lubbock, and yet they are being ignored. I don't know why. We can use many examples of why, many accusatorial statements about why, but those are human beings as well. And if we don't consider that, then why are we considering anything when we use the word I challenge the councilman, the boards that does the planning, the other agencies that do the development, to look into the human lives and the impacts that it has on it. According to Mr. Post, that there is a significant of 25% air quality is lower in minority community than in Anglo community. Is that fair? Water quality is lower in minority communities than in Anglo community. Is that why we are allowing different plants to come in, dump into our lakes? There is something wrong with that picture. You can use whatever words you want to use, but there's an injustice there. And to ignore that is to say there is no conscience of Lubbock. I'm not accusing nobody of anything, I'm just saying that there is some wrong here. And East Lubbock and North Lubbock need to be considered as part of Lubbock, Texas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. I'm Cindy Prattis. I live at 3118 20th Street, and over the past year, I have learned more than I ever wanted to know about zoning. Trust me. You guys have done an incredible job. The UDC definitely is something that is necessary. Unlike those who have spoken before me who have done a tremendous amount of work on the UDC and have researched it, I don't have an in-depth knowledge. I have flipped through it online. It's very extensive. As a citizen of Lubbock, I do agree that there needs to be some fine-tuning done to that, and they have spoken very eloquently as to those items that I think should be considered. Much more pointed as a representative of the Pitchfork Gang, I would really like to be, I'd like to see consideration made on the 19th Street segment between Boston and University that now shows that it would be zoned high-density residential and heavy commercial. I think that is something that when I post this on all of our social media, our Pitchfork group is going to be asking me, "Why didn't you speak to that?" I'm speaking to that. I hope that very quickly I will have an answer to which I can respond, because I know they're going to look at the map and say, "What are they going to do about it?" So I do thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Prattis. If you don't mind, we're going to take about a five-minute break. We're going to stretch our legs, and then we'll get right to front row. We had a few that needed to take a break early, but we'll be in recess until, let's All right. Welcome back. We've, we'll give everybody just a minute to get back to their seats. Hey, Mr. Sawyers, P&amp;Z is in recess. We'll call them back. Just another minute to get back to your seats. All right, Mr. Sawyer, are you good me calling everyone back in from recess? I think I forgot to allow you to take everyone out. All right. You want to call back in, and then I apologize, I forgot to have you call your group out for recess.
Okay. We're planning to zone, and we're back in session.
All right. Council's back in session. We'll continue with our public hearing. Again, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the UDC, you may step forward now.
Good morning. My name is Pastor K.R. Anderson. I live at 2914 Ute. I won't be long. I was telling Adam and Ms. Dora, they kind of stole my thunder this morning, so I would like to only talk about two different things this morning. Number one, I support amortization. It's time for us as a city to move forward. This is 2023, and it's time to be positive about those of us who live on the north and east side of Lubbock. Any industry in a neighborhood prevents growth. Housing, department stores, restaurants. Always, I am also against buffering. I don't feel like any industry should be next to a neighborhood. I don't feel like any industry should be next to a neighborhood because it's loud, there's foul odors, and there's also health conditions. I live, as you know from my address, on the east side, and I just want you to hear some of the noises I hear daily. Let me turn it up. This is one of the noises I hear daily. Another noise I hear daily, night and day. Can you hear it? You can't? That's as loud as my phone ago. These are noises that we hear every day where I live. You hear that? Night and day. 12 o'clock at night, 2 o'clock at night, 4 o'clock in the morning. We hear these. It's time for us to be considerate those of us who live on the north and east side of Lubbock. We are taxpayers also. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's see, how do you get this started? Christian, do you know how to get it?
Okay, gotcha. My name is Cody Keller. I live at 159 Adler Road in Barney, Texas. I own Keller Outdoor Advertising. Consider it a local owned and operated business. I started the company here when I, when I finished school as an undergrad and graduate student here at Tech. Still have family all over in Lubbock, and I'm here typically about once a month. So I have deep ties to this, to this community. And actually, the only reason I don't live in this community still is the difficulty for me to conduct business here as a billboard operator. About a year or so ago, I was asked to be a part of a focus group to develop effective and restrictive language on billboards, along with a number of people that have already spoken today. I believe we did just that with the consultants, and it was my understanding that at that time, the regulations that were discussed and going to be voted on were the corridor concept. The current regulations that are in the published draft of the UDC mirror that of the ordinances in the 1970s. These ordinances, I think, were probably necessary and effective at that time, based on some of the pictures that were presented earlier. But to this day, in my opinion, they are outdated and antiquated as far as the billboard regulation portion goes. Billboards would basically be limited to, by specific use, to M1 and M2, which will become LI and GI, I believe. But those zoning classifications have, in essence, been already replaced by IDP and IHI. So future opportunities are non-existent. And they're also limited, M1 and M2, to council districts 1 and 2. Lubbock has obviously grown at a rapid rate, and most of this growth is moving in the south and west direction. There's a need for effective and inexpensive advertising mediums for local businesses in this area. Billboards provide just that. I would say that 95% of my advertisers in this market are locally owned and operated businesses. They're not publicly traded companies, they're not national companies, they're here locally, and billboards drive business for them. There's a constant demand. I get calls all the time on billboards that, when is it coming available? And just, there's a demand for them, and there's just not enough inventory to provide in this market. I know that Planning Zoning Commission members, the businesses that they represent or work for, as well as council members and even individual as individuals, not through their companies, I've used billboards in the past. So I know that, to a certain extent, people see the merit in them and the positive impact that they can have on business and development in this area. This is a current zoning map. M1 and M2, like I said, will become LI and GI. But as you can see, light gray and dark gray are M1 and M2. You can see those areas where they are allowed, that are already basically filled with billboards in those regions. This growth south and west, towards Loop 88, there is no such M1 or M2 zoning classifications anywhere that will ultimately be LI or GI. It's just, so there's no opportunity to grow or provide our service to businesses in those I think there's a way to implement effective, increased and effective regulation while also allowing billboards in appropriate areas. Major concern, it has seemed to me, again, based on the pictures that were shown, is that billboards on arterial streets such as 19th, 34th, 50th, 82nd become ISOs, and I'm all on board with that. I have no issue with eliminating them from those areas. So what we discussed in our focus group was implementing a corridor system where billboards are allowed on major thoroughfares coming into the city. I think this is a positive way to handle things. It should be amenable to most sides. Another way that I think that we could probably increase regulation is currently, billboards are allowed every 500 feet within the city limits. That spacing could be taken at a minimum to 1,500 feet. Space them out further apart. Currently, billboards are allowed to be 750 square feet. Take that down to 672. These type of regulations mirror much more of what TechDOT does, who is the main governing body in the state of Texas for billboards. Also, there should be a regulation that puts a minimum spacing on billboards from residentially zoned properties. There's no such regulation currently in place, so the concerns about M1 properties in districts 1 and 2, if that's abutting a residential property, a billboard could go there and could be, in essence, on their property line. Of course, through a specific use situation. I know earlier it was expressed that there's a concern of opening the floodgates to billboards being all over these major thoroughfares, which, to be completely honest, is just inaccurate. If you implement the increased spacing, there's really not that many opportunities to do billboards just by, by way of there already being billboards in place. You cannot get permits through TechDOT or through you guys if the spacing requirements are implemented into the, into the new UDC. So here is what was proposed at the focus group and what, like I said, it was my understanding, I thought that this is what was agreed upon at that time. A lot of the stuff is boilerplate information that is already included, but as you can see, I have listed there that new billboards shall only be permitted on the following corridors: Loop 289, Marshall Sharp Freeway, Spur 327, I-27, and Loop 88. These almost entrance corridors into the city where local businesses really benefit from getting eyes on their product on a billboard and making people aware of what they sell. Again, like I said, a lot of the, the rest of the stuff is pretty standard from the previous ordinances, but I did include in there the reduced size to 672 square feet, the increased spacing to 1,500 feet between billboards. I did want to discuss if this is, if the corridor concept is considered, the current setback in height requirements don't really, don't really go hand in hand with the corridor concept. I think that they make sense for arterial streets because you don't want a billboard way above grade or a billboard set on the street. As you can imagine, on a wide right-of-way or freeway, there's already four lanes across, access roads, and then right-of-way as well. So a further setback of 43 feet or behind the front edge of the building is unnecessary and overkill, in my opinion. Same goes for height requirements. The 35-foot height that is allowed right now on billboards is taken from the base of the sign. I think that that should be taken from the base of the main traveled ways, which is where the intended audience is traveling. That's exactly how TechDOT does it. And again, this kind of more mirrors and implements what they do with their billboard regulations. Again, the rest of that stuff is pretty much standard from what's already there. This is, I wanted to show a quick picture of, or actually, it's a quick video, of a campaign that the City of Lubbock did with Lubbock Economic Development Alliance and the Chamber of Commerce. And this is on one of my billboards here in this market that was right at the end of the year when there was some rebranding going on, and their message was actually up on one of my billboards. So I wanted to show that because I think that obviously proves and shows that they see the merit and the positive impact, marketing-wise, that a billboard can have. That's another picture of it there. I believe, just some final comments, I'll try to get out of y'all's way. So again, I was asked to be on that focus group to develop language, and I thought we did just that. I know that there's a small group that's very vocal, that's completely against billboards and probably never want to see one again, have every billboard removed from the city. But I think that their mindset is short-sighted, it's outdated, and it's not in line with the desires and needs of local businesses or property owners in this market. You know, I think that if you were to survey property owners on these corridors and local businesses that would benefit from advertising opportunities in these areas, I think there would be resounding support, just due to the fact that the, the business that it drives for them. In my mind, what this is going to come down to is approving or implementing regulations into the UDC that appease a small vocal group, or you implement something that benefits locally owned and operated businesses that, that drive tax dollars for the city and tax revenue for the city. And with that, I'll tie it up, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to, to answer anything that I can.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
I'll just remind council at this time that we're, no questions at this time during public hearing?
I have a question. I just would like to go back to the information here. I just want to get another question.
Sure. This one here?
Yes.
Mr. Keller, would you mind providing a copy of that?
Absolutely. That's no problem at all.
Just one.
Sure. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Ty Jones, resident at 8104 County Road 6920 here in Lubbock. So I, my family and myself own Choice Media, billboards as well. I've spoken to two of these council members before, previous times, to fill in a little history. This has always been a little bit of a push-pull, and really where it's ended up always is just as, there's no give and take. It is just simply, there's no opportunity, no, no way forward for the billboard industry to move forward and to be in areas of the city that, all areas of the city, right? A billboard's not just for, it's not just for east side, it's not just for west side, it's informational for businesses, for, for people to, and what happens with, with billboards is it directs, it directs information off of that and diverts traffic to a location. Maybe it's a business that's off of a major, you know, major artery or Loop 29 or whatever, but I echo both Lamar, both Mr. Keller in saying that this is, the ordinance is not quite set, ready, ready for approach yet, ready for, for approval. And I echo that. There's a small group here, and there's a small group here, right? We advocate for billboards, there's a group that advocates for, for nots. But in a previous meeting, I had, over a course of a few hours, was able to garner 400 signatures in approval, door-to-door. That's your everyday people that just go through, that don't have an agenda, that you just go through and you say, are you okay with billboards? And all of them said yes, almost exclusively. I don't think I came across one person that said, get off my yard. And so now, given those people do, do exist, but, but generally speaking, a small group shouldn't advocate for the entire city of Lubbock. Most people are busy working, they're not here, they can't, they, this is an important issue to them, but they do benefit from it, and they benefit in ways that they don't even, they don't even know in a lot of ways. And I do appreciate the, the pictures from the 70s into what they are today, and we can, we can all agree that Lubbock is better today because of its sign ordinances, but it doesn't mean that it's, it can't continue to be better even still. We come a long ways, if you'll notice the setbacks, we'll never go back to that again. So that's a great way to sow fear into what it could, oh no, if we open this up, we could go back to that. No one is advocating for that. Us as a billboard organizations, companies, and the general public, no one wants that. That's why we have setbacks now, that's why you have a sign ordinance the way it is, that's why right now billboards, you cannot, right now, the current setback for a billboard is 43 feet, or the same as the building next door to it. And so again, I'll advocate, we, we're not asking for billboards on every corner. That's not, and I haven't heard one billboard company advocate for that. I haven't heard one billboard companies have tunnel vision and say, this is all that we want, we just want billboards everywhere. That's not what any, anybody's advocating for. And I'll, I'll speak for myself, for the City of Lubbock, the Owen Group came to us representing the City of Lubbock, and we gave away tens of thousands of dollars during COVID to, to put messaging up for COVID. At, absolutely, we, we said yes. We're, we're a community partner. And I hear that from Cody, and I hear that from Lamar, and I hear everybody. And I don't just hear it, I see it. I see it through actions of 555. I gave my card to, to Mr. Hill outside. I said, we've done with, through the Firefighters Association, we've done billboards for 555, for free. I've given, Ron McDonald House, just recently, we gave several thousand dollars in advertising South Plains Food Bank. We are members of the community, and we are here, we live in this community, I live here. I know much of Lamar, their, their representatives live here in this community, and they want to be a part of the community in a positive way. I myself, we're a faith-based organization. I don't even allow alcohol, tobacco, or, or any kind of addiction-type products on our billboard, simply because we believe in the power of advertising, and we, we want our sign to be something that says a Bible verse and not, and now I can't, I know that everybody doesn't necessarily share those same values, but those are the values that we bring to the table. And every single land lease that I own, we have 1,000 billboards faces across Texas, Choice Media does. And every single contract that I have with a land lease, it shows no add-on enterprises. None. And that's a value that we believe. And I, we get painted as, as tunnel vision, and we only have one goal, and that's profitability, and that's just absolutely not the case. Again, there is a place for us, it, it is regulated, it does have rules around it. TechDOT currently has rules 1,500, TechDOT already puts in rules on expressways for 1,500 feet, right? You can't do that. Now, given, the city needs to also have 1,500 feet because there can be ways around that as far as re-low, there, there can be exemptions for re-low locations. So there, but if you guys would work with us, invite us to the table, we just recently worked with the City of Brownfield. I don't know if you've been to the City of Seminole, okay? But there, there are bad operators within the billboard industry that, that do have tunnel vision, just like every industry that's out there. And so that's why we have regulations, we have bumpers in place. So with the City of Brownfield, we worked with them here recently because we felt like their regulations were too loose. We did not want them. So we went in and we helped them put in sign height regulations, setback regulations, and, and radio regulations. And then also, we gave them a spot on our billboard and said, hey, you can use this anytime you would like.
Mr. Jones, I'm just going to ask you to keep this to Lubbock and the UDC.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me. Just an example of, of cooperation with another city. But within that, we're happy to be partners with the city. Don't think this UDC represents our industry well. I think it can be improved. And so I just, I would hope for open eyes and open, just open discussion within that instead of straight 1970-style rule. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Travis Stribling. I own the Doubletree Hotel at 505 Avenue Q and reside in San Angelo. I'm proud to have a hotel investment in District 1. I was born here and raised in San Angelo. I have known Lubbock all of my life. My family and I have been invested in the community for many, many years. I'm thrilled to continue to find investment opportunities here. Lubbock has some incredible resources with Texas Tech and two large hospitals that serve the region among many others. Lubbock sits in the middle of abundant and vibrant farmland. It doesn't have benefit of mountain ranges or other major geographical features that Instead, strategic yet sensible Instead, strategic yet sensible zoning, building codes, and other development guidelines, including landscaping, parks, sidewalks, lighting and signage, have created a visually appealing community. Development has flourished from businesses and young families drawn to Lubbock because of its quality of life, education, and affordability. The growth in Lubbock in the last 20 years is impressive, and it's poised to continue for many years to come. The foundation of this growth was laid in the 1970s. Billboards changed the landscape of this community. Because this is big sky country, billboards have a significant impact on visual clutter that people see driving through town. I can offer one comparison of paths for billboards. On one side, excuse me, drive up the Marsha Sharp Freeway, past University, on one side of the highway, you see Texas Tech's football stadium, beautiful architecture. On the other side of the highway, you see a 10-story parking garage covered in signage. Which would you rather see? I think most of the people in this room would agree that the signage on the garage is unsightly. People are drawn to Lubbock because it doesn't have the visual clutter that other communities like San Angelo, Dallas, and Houston have. So I ask that you please consider not making changes to the sign ordinances that have been in place for many years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I would ask those that continue to come forward in opposition that we have heard a lot about the signs, just let's try to keep that from being repetitious to what other members have said. Thank you.
My name is Chad Davis. I live at 8303 County Road 6950. I'm a partner at Park Hill Architecture and Engineering. I am a landscape architect, longtime resident of Lubbock. I am here today in my capacity as the chairman for the board at Luca, the Louise Hopkins Underwood Center for the Arts. Our membership and board asked me to come today to testify and to give our position. Unfortunately, it's in regard to billboards and signage. And the one thing I will say, just very quickly, is that in the concept of law is the idea of a nuisance. And a nuisance, if you're just driving by something, is one thing. A nuisance, if you're an adjacent landowner, is something totally different. In the last year, we had to come before council for a specific use permit adjacent to our campus in downtown Lubbock, where tens of millions of nonprofit, non-tax dollars have been invested in the downtown area to create a quality-of-life amenity and an asset for this community. We had to come before this group, before these groups, because there was a person that wanted to put a billboard, an electronic billboard adjacent to our property on Marsha Sharp Freeway. Because of the nature of our activities, because of the nature of our campus, if you have been there on a first Friday, you know that we do a lot of things outdoors. We have a lot of performances, we have a lot of different things going on. Sometimes those are film projections during our first, our Flatland Film Festival. The glare and the amount of light that would have come off that billboard would have been a nuisance to our property. I don't have a problem with the billboard industry. I don't think our board has a problem with billboard industry. We live in America where capitalism works. I don't think I want to live anywhere else that doesn't maybe have a capitalistic economy. What I do hope that this city organization will keep is the process of a specific use permit regardless going forward. So any adjacent landowner will have the opportunity to fully evaluate and fully share their position with you moving forward on that kind of adjacency. I highly doubt that anyone that has come before you today in the signage industry lives in an R1 lot but directly adjacent to a property that has a lit billboard and deals with that immediate nuisance. It's that immediate nuisance that the governmental function of our society allows us to provide recourse for. I am one of the people in the city that I prefer aesthetics without billboards, but I am also open to business and business development. But if I own property adjacent to another property that all of a sudden is going to be subject to that type of nuisance, I want the right to address that. I want to be heard by a jury of my peers and I want a process to go through. That is the only thing I will add. I certainly appreciate this as a longtime resident, as a business owner in Lubbock. This council, I say it once and over again, in the last five to 10 years, you guys have done some incredible things for our community. The reinvestment in this very facility. You guys have taken on some of the hardest problems that we've had in my tenure here, and I can't thank you enough for the time that you've spent. Thank you.
Good morning, council and commission, staff, guests. I, of course, am going to keep my remarks here to the downside parts of the UDC. Oh, sorry. My name's Josh Schenckles. I live in the 2600 block of 47th Street, and I am a member of the board of the Lubbock Compact Foundation. And I'm also speaking to you this morning in my position as the project lead for the Lubbock Environmental Action Plan, our air quality monitoring study that was already mentioned. Very briefly, no offense to everybody who said this, but we do have an important geologic feature in Lubbock, and that's our Playa Lakes. And I think it's kind of disappointing, as we followed the development of the Unified Development Code, to see protections for our Playa Lakes slowly whittled down. And I think, you know, I'll just be very brief on that. I think that's something that can be addressed because it's so important to the nature of our hydrology, our recreation, the many, many migratory animals that move through our city and their path coming and going. So I hope that you'll attend to that. I would like to associate myself highly with the comments already delivered by Mr. Reed, Ms. Cortez, Ms. Anderson, and my associate, Mr. Hernandez, who, we did not coordinate our activities this morning. However, and I'll try to be brief here, I would like to add a few pieces of context to what's already been mentioned with regard to an amortization provision being absent from this Unified Development Code. I'd like to characterize my comments in the context of legacies and debts. We, the people making decisions before us, lay down both of these things. And all of us here are the beneficiaries of many legacies that are worthy and laudable and are to be applauded. But we're also the owners of debts created by bad decisions in the past and poor planning and meanness, you know? There's no other way to put that. And so in that context, and this is no surprise to the city council, that there are some things that are just going to get paid one way or another. So we're either going to collectively pay for a road system that's in good maintenance, and everybody's going to benefit for that, or we're going to individually pay as our cars are run down and our commute times are expanded and we spend more gas. And there are so many dimensions of how a city works and operates that is within this context. There are some things that we're just going to pay for one way or another. And it's with that in mind that I, you know, it's already been mentioned here. We had our 1923 ordinance. We spent 100 years getting ourselves into the position that we're in now. It's going to take us some time to get out of that. The longer, like with every other problem in our lives, the longer we do not attend to problems, the bigger they get and the more expensive they become. And so that's why we're in the position we're in today. The 2021 Health Outcome Study conducted by Texas Tech University and Sam Houston State University, that has already been mentioned in this room, did point to a highly elevated incidence of severe asthma and allergy, particularly for residents in the northeast quadrant of our city, roughly defined. What hasn't been mentioned yet is that that Health Outcome Study also calculated a cost of loss from those same said health outcomes. And as of 2013, which was within the bounds of the study, you know, it had to be started and stopped at someplace, the costs to our community's residents in lost school, lost work, and outright death is currently figured at $81.9 billion. That's a big cost to incur. And the longer that we go without addressing it, the more we say, "That's your problem." We want our individual residents to pay that cost. We don't want to take on the burden of that cost that we collectively inherited. And that's really problematic because what that comes up to is a figure of almost $3,200 per person in Lubbock. Now, that might be people having to spend for their allergy and asthma medication, but that's also the employer who isn't able to benefit from the labor hours of their employee who is suffering from asthma. Okay, so this cost doesn't just get incurred on those people most directly affected by it. It spreads out and moves around. And in that way, it's all our collective debt. Now, when we started to get ready to do our environmental plan, we had to go to neighborhood organizations and all kinds of partner organizations to solicit partnership for this. And we secured partnership from almost every neighborhood association in the city for our program. And I went and visited the Chapman Hill Neighborhood Association, and Ms. Patterson will remember this well, she was at that meeting. We, I, you know, presented our case, I answered all their questions, and then I excused myself from their proceeding so that they could talk without me there. And I walked right across the street to Chapman Hill Park, and every surface of it was covered in a 3-millimeter-deep webbing of cotton fibers. Every tree, the street, everything in that vicinity was covered in cotton fibers. These are what people, as have already been mentioned, are dealing with on a daily basis, okay? Now, this is a problem because it has subsequent knock-on effects. For instance, the city right now is engaged in a very laudable process, the neighborhood planning process. It has a lot of objectives that we would hope to achieve. However, those are undercut by this underlying fundamental in that if we do not address the industrial zoning, those things have a limited level of efficacy, okay? That subsequently unbalances the development patterns of our city, and everybody can see the evidence of that. How far it's stretching out southwest, how difficult it is to encourage in other parts of our city. That unbalances the tax burden of our city, whereby people in the southwest part of town are carrying a disproportionate amount of the tax burden because of their property valuations, whereas other people in the north and east and central part of the city are carrying less of the city's tax burden. And then, of course, the 14th Amendment calls for the equal application and protection of the law. And so it could be very reasonably argued that we have at least two big 14th Amendment violations. In one part of the city, folks are unduly sub-
Josh, I think I see you tying this back into the UDC, I really do. I think Adam hit some of these points.
Yes.
Very succinctly. I would, instead of getting off on some legalities, I'd ask you to just keep it within the confines of what the UDC is, okay?
Okay. The UDC would help, having this provision within the UDC would both help remedy our 14th Amendment potential violations in the unequal application of the environmental law that we're subject to and the tax burden that the other half of the city is unjustly subject to. And with that, I'll reserve the rest of my comments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a, just trying to get an idea of where we will break for lunch? How many, just out of curiosity, how many more people do we have? Just show of hands that anticipate speaking.
Am I yet?
Maybe one more, okay, all right. Well, then we may, we may get, we may continue on until closer to lunch.
I'm Joe McKay. I'm past chairman of the Zoning Board of Adjustment and a member of the 30 Conferenceive Plans Study Group. I live at 5115 Second Street, number 12. And I have, I had nine or 10 things to say about cutting that down to three, since I think most of those others have been covered. But we've become a, Lubbock's become a model for other Texas cities because of our clean appearance and lack of sign and billboard clutter on our expressways, our highways, and our thoroughfares. You never get a second chance to make a good first impression. And hopefully, as people come to Lubbock, they have that good first impression that we don't want to destroy. The Survey of American Cities by the Center of Applied Research in Lincoln, Nebraska, found that Lubbock was number 16 out of the nation's 100 most attractive cities. An alternative to, there are 372 cities in Texas who have prohibited any new billboards. Those include Austin and Fort Worth and Houston. So it's not just the little cities that are having this effect. But an alternative, of course, was mentioned, a referendum. There could be a referendum on whether or not to allow more billboards in Lubbock, and you could vote out any new billboards. So there is an alternative to adding more billboards, and that would be to eliminate the, even having an opportunity for more billboards, since we have over 152 of those right now. But that's my comments, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Closing arguments.
Yes, that is all good. Okay, my name is Alma Johnson, and I live at 2420 30th Street. I don't have an awful lot to say, but I would like to kind of like plead... To plead, I know it was a surprise to hear about north and east Lubbock and the things that are going there, like the industrial. We're circled into that. And I'd like for everybody that have not gone to east Lubbock, north Lubbock, and just looked around, look around, and to see when you're planning these things, zoning, that you don't exclude going in that area. Because I hear a lot of things about west Lubbock, west Lubbock. It is beautiful over there. It smells great over there. It looks wonderful over there. But evidently, this committee have not been over to east Lubbock and north Lubbock to see what is happening over there. This has been a long time coming, and I would like to see changes for, any kind of change that is positive for north and east Lubbock. So please, when you're in your little meeting, whatever you do, please think about north and east Lubbock. We need changes. We need changes. So please think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the UDC? May step forward now. All right, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the UDC, you may step forward now. That was a lot. All right, seeing none further, at this time, we will close the joint public hearing, and we will be in recess. Let's call it about 15 minutes for me to have a bit of time to confer with the P&amp;Z chair. So we'll be in recess. Let's call it till 11:45. At this point, we, I think there's a general consensus that there's a few things and some typographical Scrivener errors and some errata sheets that we need to, need to get worked on. And again, as people will remember and recall, P&amp;Z has to come up with something that they present to council. So, with that, I think looking at some dates for you all to look further into some issues, I'll turn it over to Mr. Sawyer for his board to look at some, maybe some date certain, or maybe a motion where they can postpone to a date certain.
All right, thank you. So, you probably feel like you're drinking from a fire hose right now? A lot of information. And I, just to be clear, when we're talking about dates, I think it's only right that we set up a special planning and zoning meeting at a later date in order to go through this in bits and pieces. We're not, we're not, I'm not asking, we're not being asked to approve this document in its entirety on, I think we discussed the third, April 3rd. And I know that you kind of got wide-eyed at that, but it's not, it's not for this document. We've had the 29-page that was presented earlier. There's still some issues we're working through on that. So, starting with dates, and it's probably going to take more than one special meeting to go through all this and make sure everybody's comfortable with it before we, we make any decisions. So, just to first step to set a meeting sooner rather than later. There's, like I said, it's going to take more than one, but we had already talked about that April 3rd date, and everybody's calendar's aligned. So, we'll need a motion to, or a special P&amp;Z meeting at a later date. And that's open for discussion. If you-
Mr. Chairman, due to the amount of volume of data to review, I recommend that we do a special P&amp;Z meeting, just for P&amp;Z, Monday, April 3rd at 8:30 a.m.
Second.
Okay.
I don't feel that's- I don't feel that's enough time to review all the data that we have here.
Well, it doesn't have to be the data in its entirety. It could, we can take this in bits and pieces. We're going to have to.
Are we going to break it up and say, "Well, bits and pieces," or are we going to take it up on the first-
That's a certain way of discussing.
That's how we're going to do it. I'm not going to look at the entirety and go, "Well, we're pulling out, wrong or not."
Agreed. We have to set a special meeting date to discuss those items, though.
To clarify, are you saying we have to set a special meeting date to discuss which items we're going to discuss? Or can we, can we say on April 3rd, we'll start with X?
Yes, maybe we start with the 3rd to establish the parameters.
Your agenda could specify what y'all want to cover if there's-
So, we can establish an agenda with that. Stating that.
Okay. Are we establishing the agenda on-
Not right now, we're not.
On, on April 3rd? Are we meeting at 8:30 on April 3rd to say, "Here's our agenda," and-
No.
Yeah.
You're, you're voting with a, you're not voting for a special meeting Monday, October 3rd, and between now and then, you won't come up with a sound, so let them-
Okay. I was, I was wondering who was set, who was setting the agenda? Okay.
Any other-
And how soon would we know what the agenda was to give us time? So, for example, if we want to do research on amortization, that might take some time in getting the agenda the day before or the week before. I guess it would be the week before? Okay. So, because I, I understand what James is saying, is like, these are complicated issues that we're talking about, and we, and we, we can't research all of them before April 3rd. So, if we can set it with, set an agenda with enough time to say, "Okay, for April 3rd, I need to have the information on this."
Teaspoons.
Teaspoons. So, so, should we do it this way? Vote to have a special meeting on April 3rd and then meet with staff separately to say which agenda items should we talk about first?
I need a mic up.
Oh, there we go. And you can meet with staff individually, not, not collectively, but individually.
Can we just kind of do our own research and however far we get individually? On the 3rd, we discuss the questions we have at that time. And on the 3rd, if we still have more questions, we have another special meeting in the future.
Well, okay, so, this has been going for a long time, and the more organized we are about it, the quicker we're going to get through these things. So, I'm perfectly okay, there's going to be a lot of going back and forth, but we need to establish what it is we're going to address. I think that's valuable, rather than just ad hoc.
Mr. Chair, the, the document that was handed out today by Terry has been gone over and over and over. This is a result of thousand, I would say about a thousand hours between all the consultants, the main consultants here in Lubbock. Most of these items have already been remedied here. Some of them have not. But I do think that just by getting us a starting point of the April 3rd date, our members can look over this document and some of their other concerns, and we could, we just need to have a starting point.
Yeah.
I, I'm not suggesting that we drag it out any more longer than it has been for four years, but I do think that we need to start with April 3rd and this document and before.
Okay, so, there's a motion for the 3rd. There's a second. There's, we, we discussed about an agenda being published. And is that going to be us meeting with, how are we going to establish that agenda? What, who's going to determine which topics are going to be put on that agenda?
Well, everybody on the commission can reach out to staff, and staff can coordinate with you as the chair of the board and put together an agenda.
Level of priorities, maybe, or rather, based on contention?
Right, I mean, we can all email in agendas. I mean, we had this UDC delivered to us, the big packet that you have. Mine was at my office three weeks ago. So, this is not like, this is the first time we've seen it. So, we have, we have had access to it. We just need to
Okay.
Email in our agenda items that concern us.
Any other comments, questions, concerns before we call the question? Okay. So, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? We need a show of hands. So, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, then, we will hand it back over to Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sawyer. Just, again, clarification, y'all set this to a date certain of April 3rd for further discussion, and that will be as a special P&amp;Z meeting, is that correct? All right. 8:30. All right. And with that, it is 11:53 on March the 23rd, and City Council and this joint session will adjourn.